Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit. Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of June 9th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at CityOfLS.net. Something great is coming to Lee Summit. The grand opening of Green Street is slated to be August 15th through the 17th. The weekend will be filled with festivities including live music, food trucks, the farmers' market, kids' activities, and more. Green Street is located in the heart of downtown Lee Summit across from City Hall between Third and Second Streets. Find all the details at greenstreetls.com. A section of Northwest Bent Tree Drive between Northwest Chipman Road and Northwest Bent Tree Circle will close on Thursday, June 12th through the end of June. The work is necessary as part of the last phase of the Chipman Road Improvements Project. Northwest Chipman Road between View High Drive and Northwest Bent Tree Drive remains closed to through traffic. All work is weather permitting. For the detour and more information, visit the city's website. And Tour Del Lake's Bike Ride is Saturday, June 21st, beginning at 7:00 a.m. at Longview Community Center. Choose from four different routes around five different lakes in Lee Summit. Find more information at lsparks.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crises. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plain clothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words: mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982 Zen Route.
Officers in route, 914. Armored vehicle.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
It's extremely rewarding overall, just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work, in many cases, leaving the city for employment, and went through a leadership class through the chamber, learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have, and was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on City Council, and so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my, you know, involvement on City Council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters, and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it, and to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with Metropolitan Community Colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters, and they're all fairly active, and some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails. I love riding my bike, and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible, talented residents that come from all different walks of life, you know, very diverse group of families in our community, that it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that in many cases you get out of it more than you put in.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together in service to our community. Grant us wisdom in our discussions, fairness in our decisions, and respect for one another. May we work with open minds and hearts and always seek the best for those we represent. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'm calling to order the City Lee Summit Regular Session Number 40. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Raeder.
Present.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Present.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Bertim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird. Here. All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That's unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Second is the approval of the consent agenda. Oh, I dove right in. Yeah, I did. I did that part. Okay. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And that's also unanimous. Thank you all. That takes us to Council Roundtable. Items of general interest, things going on in the community. Somebody had to have gone to Downtown Days. All right, Councilmember Shields.
I did indeed go to Downtown Days.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun this year. Rode a bunch of the rides with my son, and it was a great time. And Downtown Main Street is not resting on their laurels. They have Ladies Night Out this Thursday night, so hopefully folks will come out and enjoy that as well.
Excellent. All right. It was pretty packed when I went on Saturday night, let me tell you. Anybody else? Council Roundtable? All right, seeing none, we'll go right into public hearings then. This first one's a little different. It's, I'm going to close the regular session and do a public hearing. It's not the exact same as what we've dealt with in the past as far as public hearings, but pretty close. I've got a template, the legal is provided for me. We've got, so I'm going to close the public hearing in the matter of Galaxy Liquor License Application Appeal Hearing. We've got, would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk?
Do you swear to tell the truth? The whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be God.
Chief Forbes is going to start it off for us. I will say that legal advised me that it's one of those weird things where anything between 100 and 300 feet probably should, maybe probably should, go to council. But in this case, we're just not set up that way. We've not done it that way. So Chief Forbes will tell us kind of the process and how this works. So Chief?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, Travis Forbes, Chief of Police, currently the Director of Liquor Control as well. And I can approve most liquor applications, but there are some exceptions in our city ordinance, including Section 413B of Chapter 4, which states that if a business is attempting to get a liquor license within 100 to 300 feet of a church or school, they have to have a public hearing on the matter before council. So the police chief is not able to approve any liquor licenses for a facility within that range. We received an application from Galaxy Liquors to locate in a new facility that's been constructed in the area there off Tudor Road in Douglas. To familiarize you with the overview, the church in question, Deerbrook, is circled. That's Schlotzsky's to the, kind of, to your left, I believe, unless the image is reversed. And there's a new kind of strip center in there that is leasing out spaces, and included in one is an application for Galaxy Liquors. And you can see it's within that 100 to 300-foot buffer. So the purpose of this public hearing is to gain council feedback on this application via public hearing process and give the public any opportunities they want to speak on the matter as well.
Okay.
My apologies, I had two exhibits to, I gave to the city clerk. Exhibit A is the actual license application, and Exhibit B is this image that you see here depicting the distance. And you can see that it bisects the business in question, which is a point-to-point measurement from the edge of the church to the edge of the business in question. I'll entertain any questions, or we can allow the applicant to speak?
Well, let me read a couple of things that staff prepared for me. So, purpose is to provide the applicant with an opportunity to address the reasons for denial for the liquor license application. The applicant has the right to be represented by council, to produce witnesses and to cross-examine any witnesses who may testify against the application. And then we're supposed to, just like we would other public hearings, consider the evidence and testimony before making our final decision. I'll take us out of public hearing, and then you can make your comments. But you've got a presentation from Chief Forbes here, you've got, we'll have the applicant make presentation. So Chief, usually what we do is we listen to your presentation, and then we listen to theirs, and then we ask questions all at once. Is that all right if we do that then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good.
So I'll repeat a bit of that. Essentially, again, I'm unable to approve, per our ordinance, is any licenses within the 100 to 300-foot buffer area of a church, measured by point-to-point location. And as a result, we received an application from Galaxy Liquors for a location within that buffer. It's close to Deerbrook Church, off of Tudor Road. And as a result, we requested this public hearing before council to get public input, to hear the, give the applicant an opportunity to present to council and to receive guidance from you on the application for the license.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the applicant? Want to give their presentation?
Should I use this one?
Yeah, you can use that one, sure.
Thank you very much. My name is David Feingold with Michael Feingold Commercial Real Estate, and we're representing the applicant, Galaxy Liquor. Before I start, first thing I'd like to do is express our heartfelt wishes to the family of Jared Timbrook, the entire city, and the police department, and we just hope for his continued recovery. We have previously sent to all members information about Galaxy Liquor. They are a local, in the Kansas City area, real estate development company that has been involved in the development of convenience stores, liquor stores, and hotels, and strip centers, and other real estate. The building that is in question here was built by a local developer under SPAC, in other words, didn't have any specific tenants, and this caught our attention as a potential site for commercial usage. And I think that speaks to the vitality of the Douglas Corridor and everything that's good that is going along there. Now, this will not be just a liquor store. The developers also had conversations with an ice cream franchise, a mail-it franchise, and there could be others. And as was explained, but for the distance to the church, the zoning is all appropriate for this use. Also, the, we've looked at other businesses in the area, and there's not necessarily a proliferation of any of the other commercial uses, and so we think that it would be in a very appropriate use. Galaxy Liquor and their people are a good corporate neighbor. Their establishments are very well kept up. They are policed very carefully. There's no accumulation of trash or loitering permitted in any of their other establishments. And I'm very proud to represent them because they really do a very, very good job, and they will be a very, very good corporate neighbor and a good corporate citizen. And we look forward to a positive outcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for our staff or the applicants? Yes, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I tried looking up reviews and just other locations. Do you own any other locations in the Kansas City area? And the only thing I could find is Galaxy Liquor and Tobacco. Will you be selling tobacco products? Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I need you to, Mr. Feingold, I need you to come forward and answer the questions in the microphone.
I'll just stay up here. There are other locations in Shawnee and Lenexa and other outlying areas of the city. And then it's typical with a business license for liquor store that cigarette and tobacco is sold as well.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any pictures of those other locations as to how they look and how they're kept up?
I did include, yes. Oh, I don't know how to use that. Probably ought to just take these out. I miss the tech boom. I mean, this is, we could show the entire thing, that would be easier.
Why don't you show the front of the building and start, sir?
And then how many feet is it from Lee Summit North High School?
Wait a minute, I don't have that, but here's, wait a minute, I do have this.
Councilmember, I'll respond to that question. It is outside of the buffer from Lee Summit North High School, point-to-point. So we didn't measure it exactly, but it's definitely without, outside of the 300-foot buffer.
Okay, thank you. So it's just the church that's in question, the, okay.
This is the architect's rendering of what this one will look like, and I apologize. I have one in the package that I sent to everyone. There was a picture, and that is typical of what the stores look like. They're all completely refurbished and...
I was just kind of wondering how they're maintained, but I see this as a picture of when it's new. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Feingold had sent, you know, I set this up through me, through to you, but I thought he had a presentation, but I, we didn't receive a presentation. So...
I'm not aware of receipt of any presentation by the city either.
So we need some visuals, Mr. Feingold, to help with this.
Okay, well, let me take you through. And if I could just get some assistance on, ah, it's right here.
Like you were asked how many facilities, and I'm pretty sure you've got numerous facilities.
Yes. This is a picture of the outside and the inside of what I would call a typical liquor store. I could show you several more, but they would basically, they would basically be, you know, be the same as that. And let me... Yes?
Yep, just like that. Bottom is down, that's what, like that stuff you would to show up.
Oh, okay. So this is KC Galaxy, which is the management company. And what we currently have is 17, I'll get closer so I can read it, 17 hotels, 13 gas stations, eight liquor stores, some strip mall, and then a construction company, and they do and handle their own construction.
Do you guys also have the location in St. Joe, Missouri?
Yes, they do.
Okay. There was a picture of that one online, so.
Okay.
I think that gives me a pretty good visual. Thank you.
All right, good, thank you. With their motel operations, they include Fairfield Inn, Hampton's Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, and Wingate, and they're just getting ready to do another development in Gardner, Kansas. They own and manage 13 gas stations across Kansas City and Missouri, providing convenient fuel service and essential amenities to travelers and communities. They, there's one in the Bobcat Food Market, DeSoto J Mart, Lake Shop, KC Stop, and BP Gas. Their sales are of over $30 million annually, and they employ over 65 employees.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Well, let's let, okay, I'll let you do that slide, and then let me go back to the questions.
This will be last on that then. But their key locations for the liquor store is Crown Liquor in Baser, Kansas, the 10-Star Liquor in Lawrence, Lackman Liquor in Lenexa, and Galaxy Liquor in Shawnee. And their sales are approximately 8 million annually, and they employ over 26 employees.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Pryor?
Um, that's, no, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think probably some of my questions are gonna be first to ask. So can you help clarify the 100-foot, 300-foot? So if it's over 300 feet, you can just approve administratively? If it's under 100 feet, you can't approve them at all? And between 100 and 300, you need council approval? I just want to make sure I understand, like, why, what this is for?
Yes, I believe that is correct. We can't approve anything within 100, but if it's between 100 and 300, it requires council approval.
Okay. And it's point-to-point measurement? Sometimes we talk about things that are like the legal walking path is the distance, but this is point-to-point?
This is point-to-point, correct.
Okay. So you wouldn't...
The building department, so, we had the question about Lee Summit North. It actually is that close to the parking lot, but not to the actual building.
Gotcha. And you know, if you did like the legal walking path, how, like, how long would it take someone to actually walk from the church to there?
Geez, I mean, we didn't make those types of measurements. It's fairly close though.
That's fair. You don't have to, you don't have to make it up, that's fine. Did the church express any opposition to this use?
We haven't heard any opposition or support from the church.
Okay.
Mr. Feingold, do you want to answer that?
Excuse me, I did fail to mention, but we did have conversations with the pastor to explain what was going on, and we were told that they did not have, as the church, not speaking for all the members, obviously, but from the church position, they would not voice any opposition to it.
Okay. Other than needing a liquor license, this area, I take it is zoned appropriately? What is it, commercial or?
Yes, from my understanding, and we can certainly have the development services speak to that, but it's my understanding it's zoned appropriately for this purpose, other than the liquor license, which has additional requirements.
Okay. Can you pull up the map again, showing the locations? So I'll admit, I was a little confused. I actually had to go onto like Google Maps to try to figure this out. So the green site, that's the site that we're actually talking about, right? That wants to be the liquor store?
Correct, yes.
And then the church is circled in red there?
That is correct.
So, okay. So they're, they are close to the school, but they're not directly across the street from them, kind of tucked back in that little shopping area on that, on that off, on that street? Okay. I think those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, but for this 300 buffer, would everything else clear for the application for the liquor?
Yes, there are some other requirements, and I believe we are, it has to do with the lease, that has to be completed. Not a huge deal, we just have to make sure the administrative paperwork's all sorted out. This is the biggest blockage to an approval, for sure.
Okay, so there's no other issues with the actual application for the liquor license itself?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, okay, Councilmember Lovell?
In the original intent of the ordinance that were, that we have here, I mean, was it to avoid putting liquor stores next to it, like to add an extra layer, or like was there the intent that we wouldn't do this?
Yes, Councilmember, this ordinance definitely predates my time here. We've made some revisions to the ordinance, but we didn't revise this section recently. And I assume it has to do with proximity to certain locations like churches and schools, and just being, having that type of business close to those types of buildings.
Is there, do we have a position from the school district on that being there, or is it outs?
No, we do not have an official position from the school district either.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Feingold, so the, your client is gonna occupy the entire building?
That's correct. They're gonna buy the entire building, and the liquor store will be just one of the tenants. And it's anticipated that that would be in the store, in the store furthest away, you know, from the church. But they've also had conversations with an ice cream franchise and a mail-it franchise, and there could be some other uses. So it will, you know, it will be a general-purpose commercial area, not just centered solely on liquor.
So just to clarify and just remind me, I know we approved this property to be constructed a couple of years ago, so it's been sitting vacant then for a while?
Well, the local developer, I'm sure, got all the appropriate building permits, because when we started looking at the building and met with him and checked with the city, we were told that everything was in compliance, and that as far as zoning went, I didn't ask the question then about proximity to a church, but that from that standpoint, as far as we know, all of the building codes were met, and the building permits were issued. And so they were compliant with everything, and, you know, as I said earlier, it's just kind of a testament to the vitality of the area. Here, a developer puts up an empty building, basically, and puts it on the market, and within a relative, I mean, obviously, it's not even finished, it's just a shell. The developer will have to come in and complete and finish the entire area, including the storefronts.
So your client is purchasing the property then from the original developer?
Well, repurposing, I would imagine. In other words, they're gonna have to come back in and apply for building permits, and make sure that for what is done going forward is in compliance with everything. And just as the officer just said about any other requirements, this is the first step. There are other lists of things that are gonna have to be complied with before the final license is issued, and we will be working very close with the city to make sure we're in strict compliance.
No, I can appreciate and respect that. So what's the entire footprint? What's the entire building?
7,000 square feet. Let me, I have a slide.
Just approximate, doesn't have to be exact. And so your client, the liquor component, will occupy the majority of those 7,500?
No, it will, of the 7,000, it will occupy approximately 3,300 square feet.
Okay. Okay, and then for development team, does the parking ratio, anything change with the type of use? Anybody?
How do I, how do I switch this? Oh, I was gonna, okay.
Yes, please. Good evening, Amy Nassup, interim director of development. They did get all their zoning and development plan approvals. They are, when they originally came in with the town development plan, they're about 30 or so parking spaces over what the UDO would typically require for that retail space, and it's about 7,900 square feet in size.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, I appreciate that. So their use, their use for, in this case, for what they're coming before us, when, this is above chief's pay grade, so, so what they're asking for specifically, though, it conforms with the use of the property, and we have enough parking spaces.
It conforms with the development requirements and the zoning requirements in terms of, you know, the permits and the plans that are required, and the development services plan review. The only outstanding item is the liquor license part.
Okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that very much. That's all I have for now, Mayor.
Excuse me, if I could figure out how to do this, I've got a floor plan to show you.
Okay, sure.
Could you please?
I forgot you.
Oh. Okay, yeah, there's the overview right there, so, you know, various depths, and then depending how much feet on frontage is taken, then that's where the demising walls would go.
Okay, can you zoom out for a second, please? And that, front of that building is facing Douglas and not facing the church, is that correct?
Faces west.
Faces west, so it faces Douglas. There is a building between Douglas and this store, though. But, okay. All right. It faces west, yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Feingold.
Thank you all very much.
I'm gonna ask at this time if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against the application, please come forward. From the crowd and from the audience that we have. All right, seeing none. Does the city care to make any closing remarks? All right, thank you. Does the applicant, Mr. Feingold, do you want to make any closing remarks? Okay, thank you. I'm closing the hearing and re-entering the regular session. Do any members of the city council wish to have discussion on this application? Yes, Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be in support of this. I don't like that it's so close to the parking lot of Lee Summit North. As far as a church goes, I mean, a lot of them are adults, but I don't like that it's so close to the, even if it's not the actual school, I don't like that it's so close to the parking lot. And I was able to find enough pictures online to know that a lot of the locations are not well-maintained and are not what I would like to see go into that building, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. I will actually be echoing what Councilmember Pryor stated. I, too, was doing some research as you guys were talking, and I'm not super impressed. I feel like that's a very, it's pretty classy-looking right now, and seeing the way the buildings were designed out with all the neon lights, all the liquor signs, all over, I feel like that would not be the greatest look for that area. And I 100% am not comfortable agreeing to knowing there's alcohol being sold that close to a school, 'cause I know where you would exit is really close to where students are coming out, so whether or not where you buy it from is close enough, but where they're exiting out is directly where the students will be exiting as new drivers or just whatever, and I'm not willing to take any chances on that aspect, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. And really, I would echo the other two councilmembers, but I would also say, I think we just need to stay compliant with these types of ordinances for the city. They protect especially children across from a school, across from the liquor store, I don't think is a good thing to have, so I would not be in support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna say that I, like, love this as a use, but the area is zoned for it, the church that it's actually within that buffer zone for doesn't have a problem with it, so I don't see any reason to deny them the license, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, well, hold on. Councilmember Lovell?
Yeah, it's, I think, I kind of fall with Councilmember Shields on this one. So the building was built, so aesthetically on the outside met all of our kind of development design standards. It will still be required to have appropriate signage and fall within the kind of the ordinance, ordinances that we have in place, zoned for that use. And so I don't, and so this group is buying that building now, and then gonna fill it out with tenants that are there. I just don't see a compelling reason for me to deny that outside of, you know, personal preference, so I think kind of just following the ordinances and zone usage, and so I'll be in support of it.
All right, thank you, Sarah. So to choose whether you're in support of it or against it, I need a motion. So I gave Councilmember Carlisle something the staff graded that said, here's if you're in support of it, or if you're not, then it'd be...
I just have one question.
Yeah, go ahead. It'd be, just hold on a second. But she's gonna either make a motion to uphold the denial or to reverse the denial, and then we can debate that, so that we make sure that we know what we're, how we're voting. And then from there, we might have to take another step as well, but the whole point is, I need a motion on the floor, so go ahead and ask your question, and then maybe consider a motion.
Thank you. Just real quick, Chief, so this, you did deny this application, it's coming before us to change that denial, correct?
Yes, I did deny it, based on the premise that I'm unable to approve that type of application.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I would move to reverse the chief's denial, to deny the liquor license for the Galaxy Operations LLC. license for the Galaxy Operations LLC, DBA Galaxy Liquor for premises located at 150 Northeast Tudor Lee Summit, Missouri.
Okay, so if you're gonna, if, if, the way she read that, she wrote the reversal. So if you vote yes, that means that you would be allowing for, um, the liquor store. If you vote no, then you're, you're against the liquor store going here. So that's what we're, what's on the floor as a motion. But I need a second if it's gonna go to...
I, I seconded it on the computer.
Oh, Councilmember Shields seconded. Discussion. I think everybody's decided. That's what that usually means, uh, with no discussion. So I'm just gonna head and call for the vote. All right. Uh, all votes are in. It passes six to three, but there's another step.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the liquor license for Galaxy Operations LLC, DBA Galaxy Liquor for premises located at 150 Northeast Tudor Lee Summit, Missouri, as described in the application and subject to all other statutes, regulations, and city ordinances.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. I have a second by Councilmember Shields. Mr. Head, why did you have us redo the second one here? I don't, I don't really understand.
Because we reversed the denial and now we have to...
If reversed, we have to, now we're approved, okay. I see. So we're making a decision on, poor Chief Forbes over there making his decision, we reversed him, now we're making the motion and the second on the application itself. Okay, I got it. So if, to, to approve it, we would need to approve this if, if you want to. If you don't want to, you vote no. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes six, three. All right. Thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Um, and, uh, please keep the place really nice and tidy and, um, that's right. Thank you. All right, next we're going to another public hearing. This is a bigger one, longer one. All right. I'm gonna close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of agenda item four B. This is a View High Sports Complex Community Improvement District. 3D Builders KC LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? Please hold on one second. We're gonna actually do both these public hearings at once, are we not, Mr. Bushak? Mr. Bushak, hold on, everybody, before, I wanna make sure I get this right.
So, right now, we're just opening the first public hearing and we're going to have all the presentations during the first public hearing, and then we'll incorporate the evidence and testimony from the first hearing into the second hearing.
All right, then I did it right.
I'll have some more detail when I speak.
All right, thank you. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? All right, hello.
Hello.
The applicant, yes.
Good to see you guys again. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for having us back to provide some additional information on behalf of 3D Builders KC, the proposed developer for the View High Sports and Entertainment Project. For those of you who have forgotten me since it's been almost three long months, my name is Rachel Orr. I'm with the Lathrop Firm in Kansas City. Um, as you may recall, Christine Bushyhead and I co-presented the conceptual incentive presentation on March 18th. Um, I would like to thank staff for putting us earlier on the public hearing agenda 'cause I'm getting started three hours earlier than I did on March 18th. So as much as I love spending time with you guys, I like getting home earlier than 11:00 PM, and we'll keep this short so you can do the same. Yeah, so you can do the same, yeah. Um, so at that meeting, uh, something I want to address first before we get into the, the contents of this presentation. Council requested two separate follow-up pieces of information. I want you to know that we are going to address both of those this evening prior to your final vote. Um, it'll be in the second set of slides after Mr. Bushak presents his, uh, slides on the full incentive package. Um, and so with that, um, I guess let's talk about CDs, CID's. We want to be respectful of the CID formation process as well as the CID Act in terms of satisfying the public hearing requirements. And so there's some items that we presented at the conceptual presentation on March 18th that we are going to repeat for the benefit of those who are hearing it for the first time and to help remind you, um, what you were so excited about at that period in time. So, um, the project that necessitates the formation of the View High Sports Community Improvement District, or the CID or the district, as I'll call it interchangeably this evening, consists of a cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, 270,000-square-foot indoor/outdoor multi-sport complex. Um, at the conceptual hearing, we talked about the tremendous amount of growth, tourism, health, and quality of life aspects that this project will bring to and enhance for the city of Lee Summit and its residents. We talked about how this project is located in the View High Corridor, which is an area that's been targeted for development by the city. And importantly, and of relevance to this hearing, we also talked about the significant public infrastructure that this will bring and how those improvements would be funded in part through the city's approval of an incentive package such as, uh, the formation of a CID and the imposition of a sales tax on taxable sales within the boundaries of the district. Um, we'll discuss the, um, industrial development project as part of the Chapter 100 hearing, um, which will follow, but for right now, we're talking about the CID formation, location, and projects specifically. So first, um, the applicant, the Summit Church of Lee Summit was the applicant that submitted the petition to the city. Um, the project location is in that red box surrounded by the black circle. It's approximately 27 acres of vacant land, um, located just to the, to the south of the Paragon Star Activity Center and to the north of the Longview Activity Center. The boundaries of the CID are reflected here with the red border around it. Um, so it's immediately to the south and immediately to the west of the Summit Church. Uh, this map also shows and highlights some of the transportation-related public improvements that will make up, uh, some of the CID projects that we'll go over in a little bit, um, more detail on the next slide. But for those of you who are familiar with this area, you know that there are issues with having full access across View High Drive, and this CID project will address those access and transportation issues, uh, for, for the project site as well as for other properties surrounding the, um, area. So the public infrastructure and improvements are expected to cost approximately $10 million, which is about 20% of the total development costs for the, the overall View High Sports indoor/outdoor complex. Um, that amount is significant, and so tonight we are requesting that the city help offset those costs through the approval of the formation of the Community Improvement District. Um, and just for a little bit more insight into what those improvements are, there's some connector roads, uh, turn lanes, a private road that's gonna run in between Northwest Chipman and Northwest Ashhurst Drive. All of those public roads will be dedicated to the city, um, following completion. There'll also be original detention pond and stormwater improvements, uh, utility improvements that will serve the full 40 acres, not just the CID itself. There will also be sidewalks, shared bike pedestrian tra, uh, paths, curbing, guttering, traffic signage, street treats, street trees, and landscaping along the public rights of way. So that's a little bit more detail on what these, the 10 million of improvements, um, involves. So, one thing that we talked about also as part of the conceptual incentive presentation is that this project will, um, spur additional taxable development. Um, the public improvements that the CID is going to fund will turn a giant field into, you know, a pad site for the View High Sports project itself, as well as create four acres of pad-ready sites that will support future development, um, by, uh, future developers who are interested in, uh, having proximity to the sports complex and all of the visitors and the families that it will draw through its doors. I think that'll be a major selling point, not just for the CID property, but also all of the area surrounding in that View High Corridor. The developer is going to fund all of these eligible CID costs. This is a pay-as-you-go CID, which means the developer's paying all of them upfront, and then to the extent they bring the se, the taxable sales, they can get reimbursed for their eligible costs over time. It's an additional sales tax above and beyond what would be imposed, um, on any other taxable sales. And, you know, if they build it, it will come back to them, and if they don't, then they don't recoup all of those costs. So what that means is that the developer is a motivated partner with the city, the school district, and the other taxing jurisdictions, because if there's more taxable sales, if there's additional development in the CID, they succeed, they can recover more of their costs. And so they would be, um, that partner and that motivated, uh, going forward. But besides that motivation, um, we looked at a few examples during the conceptual presentation of real-life projects where real-life additional development occurred around properties and projects just like this. And so it's not just speculation, it's not just, uh, hopes and wishes. We really, truly believe that that, uh, will occur. Uh, we recall the Recplex in West Des Moines, Iowa, that, uh, opened two years ago. Um, this year, they're breaking ground on 100,000 square foot expansion. And then next door, a totally independent developer is developing a $400 million project that'll consist of an indoor water park, the, you know, the convention center, hotel, retail, and restaurants. So the CID project not only supports future development within the CID boundaries, but it also supports the development of the View High project, which will have a ripple effect not only through just the View High Corridor, but to the city at large. Uh, this incentive request matrix should look familiar. It's the same one that we had during the conceptual presentation. Um, the, we're focusing here specifically on the CID eligible costs, which make up over 9% of the present value of the total incentives. Um, that 9% value also assumes that the developer is able to be reimbursed for all of the eligible CID costs, which as of the, the current projections, they are not expected to recover. So, um, you know, hopefully, hopefully it does, but if, if it doesn't, that 9% is actually lower. Um, as we mentioned before, the D, the developer is at risk for all of these amounts. So for the 9.76 million, they fund them upfront, and then we'll have to work diligently with other CID property owners and community stakeholders to ensure that additional development will occur so that its investment in those public improvements can be fully, um, recovered. Um, so that is the presentation that we had for the CID portion. Um, I'll turn things over to Mr. Bushak. I think he's going to give his presentation for the full incentive package, then we'll come back up here, we'll answer any questions that you might have about the CID formation and the project, as well as address the, um, industrial development project and the Chapter 100 proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. Um, first I'll start with a procedural note and why we're handling things the way we are tonight. The incentive request the developer's presenting has four components, three different tools, and there's two public hearings that are required. My presentation covers the entire package, all of the incentives, all, all four components, all three tools, and I will talk about all of them in this public hearing, and then we'll incorporate all this evidence and testimony into the second public hearing. And because the developer prepared a second set of slides with the additional information that you requested, I think the sequence will be after I finish my presentation, they'll present their second set of slides during this public hearing. So everything will be in front of you when you hear all of our, when you, when you see all of our slides. So with that, I will start with an analysis of what the incentive request is. As I said, there's four components. There's essentially three tools. The Community Improvement District is the public hearing that we're holding right now. The Chapter 100 hearing is the second public hearing that we'll be holding in a moment. And then the fourth component, if you will, of this request is the city's sales tax redirection, which is 1.5% of the city's combined, 2.75%. So the purpose of the CID is to reimburse them for project costs. The purpose for the sales tax redirection is the same, to reimburse them for project costs, and the dollars generated from these, these two sources are intended to total that amount, which is 9% of the total project costs, uh, that they're representing for the entire project, including the pad sites. And then the Chapter 100 hearing that we'll be holding second, that's the sales tax exemption on construction materials and the real property tax abatement, 100% for 25 years. And these are the benefits to the developer, and this is the percentage request. So you'll see the requests of this developer for this entire incentive package is close to 40%, which as, as you're familiar with, is at the very higher end, above, above the range that the city council has traditionally approved. Um, but that is the request. And it's actually down a little bit from the numbers you saw at the conceptual. I think this number down here was around 42%. So they've refined some of the numbers. It's a little under 40% now. An analysis of the incentive request then, oops, that's the last slide. So we start with the timeline analysis. During the construction period, that's when the sales and use tax exemption would apply. So they would be purchasing their materials without paying sales tax, and that would be the benefit during the construction period. Then during the first 25 years of the project, the sales tax, uh, I'm sorry, the real property tax abatement would apply for the full 25 years, and the city's sales tax, sales and use rebate would apply for that time period to rebate up to the dollar amount that I showed you on the previous slide. And then also for 27, up to 27 years, the CID sales tax could be in effect. So from a timeline perspective, sales and use tax exemption at the outset, real property tax abatement for 25 years, up to 25 years of the city's contribution of this, the city's sales tax money, and then up to 27 years for the CID. Property tax benefit to the taxing districts, today, the property is tax-exempt because it's owned by the church. Their proposal at 100% abatement for the, for the full duration that's allowed by the Missouri Constitution results in no taxes to the taxing districts. So this, this component is, is pretty straightforward. The value of the incentive request to the developer, it's what I just showed you on the previous slide, close to 50 million in project costs. And the value of the incentive request, when you take into account the net present value of the real property tax abatement, again, that gets us to about 40% of the total project costs. And then the impact to the city, we've quantified down here, about 4.8 million when you account for the three components that would impact the city, and the city's percentage of this abate, of this incentive package, it's about 25%. So the leveraging that, that occurs is essentially 75% borne by other taxing districts as a result of this request, or borne by another entity, which would be the CID, a new entity that would, would be formed if you approve the CID. The rest of my analysis, uh, the rest of my slides covers Columbia Capital's analysis. Columbia Capital is our financial advisor, and we engaged them to review this project. The review that they go through is essentially like, um, the BUT-4 test. Um, they're evaluating the financial feasibility of the project, the rate of return, both with and without a loan, which they, which they've analyzed for us. And they stated in their report that the goal, they are presuming your goal, the city's goal, is to achieve the highest and best use of the property and to maximize the city's revenues. So that's, that's the starting standpoint of their analysis. They've essentially applied the BUT-4 test, which you've heard in the context of tax increment financing. It's something that's not strictly required in this case, but it's essentially the analysis that the city council, uh, applies in this situation, which is, is this incentive needed and is the incentive needed to this degree? So that's essentially what they're, what they analyze for us. The cap rate or capitalization rate, they assumed for this property to be 8.5%. And that's based on their evaluation of the current cap rate throughout the Kansas City metro area for the different types of land uses. So they took a look at office, industrial, retail, multifamily, and they've evaluated that based on the nature of this project, a fair cap rate target would be about 8.5%. And that's the, that's how they proceeded with their analysis. So, getting into their analysis, I'm just providing a summary. We have, uh, the representatives from Columbia Capital back here in case, um, we, we need to go into more detail, but I'm presenting a fairly high-level, uh, overview of, of their summary. Their summary is that the return on investment for this project is mixed, between leveraged and unleveraged. So a, a bit of terminology here. Unleveraged means it's a scenario where they're financing this completely out of their own pocket, equity only, no bank loans. And leveraged means there is a bank loan. That's, that's what you need to know between leveraged and unleveraged. So the leveraged results with a loan are, are lower than the target, and they're unleveraged, which is unlikely. It's unlikely they would do an unleveraged financing, we're presuming, that they would, they would incur a loan, and that's what they've indicated. The rate of return in a leveraged scenario is a little lower than the targets. And so Columbia Capital's analysis of that conclusion is, they, they indicated that in the last bullet here, and this is from the report, we expect the result, this result is potentially over-aggressive assumption by the developer on the level of debt or the high cost of the debt, given the current high interest rates. They also conducted what they call sensitivity analysis, which is what happens to the rate of return if their income is higher or if their construction costs are lower. So they conducted an analysis, what if the net operating income is actually 25% higher than what they're projecting? What does that do to the rate of return? It obviously increases the rate of return by a margin, and if there's lower construction costs, that also increases the rate of return. So the sensitivity analysis, they've calculated what the rate of return would be if they happen to realize higher income or lower construction costs than what they're representing today. And this is the conclusion. Some combination of lower, um, net operating costs, um, total development costs, sorry, or higher net operating income could result in a leveraged return that's in line with the current market returns. So, bottom line, that's the final bullet here, their Columbia Capital's... So bottom line, that's the final bullet here, Columbia Capital's conclusion is that even after the sensitivity analysis, if there's lower costs to build a project, or if they realize slightly more income, their return is still within a reasonable range of return, meaning if they have lower costs, or if they have higher income, it's still within a range that's reasonable and doesn't over-incentivize the project. That's Columbia Capital's conclusion. So to summarize their conclusion, three basic bullet points, they've concluded there's sufficient analysis for them to conduct the analysis, which they've done. They concluded that there is, the incentives are needed to reach a fair return without a loan, and incentives are needed to reach a fair return with a loan, with leveraging. And so their conclusion is that the incentives are appropriate in this case, even taking into account their sensitivity analysis. They have some additional recommendations also, and so there's two slides here with their additional recommendations. All of these recommendations are essentially geared toward attempting to establish the certainty of the project. So the basic premise is, as they're representing this project tonight, if you approve the CID, if you pass that ordinance, and if you approve the Chapter 100 plan, there's still implementation documents, and those implementation documents could contain some of these additional recommendations that Columbia Capital's advancing. So I'll summarize those for you. They are recommending first that the developer prove that they have a private financing commitment before any reimbursement occurs, proof of their equity commitment before reimbursement occurs, certification of the public improvement costs before the sales tax rebate can be realized, certification of the total development costs to make sure that they build the entire project as represented. They're recommending performance requirements to make sure that they deliver the project as represented, and they're also recommending clawbacks in the event that there's less of a project that's ultimately built, and they're recommending a mandatory schedule to adhere to that schedule, to make sure that the project is built as represented here tonight. So those are the additional recommendations from Columbia Capital. And the last point that I will make, based on some of the testimony that I heard in the first presentation, I'll mention risk level. They are not requesting that the city issue debt or incur any sort of loan, this would be either financed entirely by the developer through equity or through a loan, which is the analysis that I just walked through. So from a risk perspective, the city is being, you're being requested to provide reimbursement source and to provide tax abatement in exchange for them building this project, which is the focus of Columbia Capital's additional recommendations to make sure the project happens. But the final point that I will make is, the risk is on the developer to generate the project and realize the reimbursement, and they're not requesting the city to issue any debt or incur any loan, so the risk calculation is heavily on the developer in this case. I think that covers everything that I intended in my initial slides, and I think next, I could, I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any, or we could go to the developer's second presentation. Oh, and I would like to enter, before I finish this presentation, I'd like to enter into Evidence Exhibits 1 through 11 as they appear in your packet.
Please enter into the record Exhibits 1 through 11. Are you going to enter into the record the other records in the second public hearing that's on the agenda?
Not yet, not yet. When we get to that, I will have those nine exhibits for that hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions? We're going to break this up since there's kind of two presentations, so to talk about this portion, let's, let's do our questions for either the applicant, Mr. Bushak, or our advisors. Councilmember Lowell.
Thank you, Mayor. So the third party that did the analysis here, is that, is that our representative?
Yes.
Gotcha.
The city's financial advisor.
Well, I say this information is incredible, I think it's really good, I think a good way to kind of vet the project. Based on their recommendations, do we know whether the developer is in agreement with some of these recommendations?
I do not.
Okay. Because the things I think of, for instance, here, certification of total development cost, that, you know, we're anticipating this, and it says, you know, if those development costs go way down, certainly improves the rate of return. But my concern with that, and I guess the question would be, you know, if you're losing amenities or features that, like, are materially different than what's being presented, so, and then performance requirements, mandatory schedule, so those are the recommendations for financial advisor analysis, but we would, I guess, is this a time to ask the developer if they're amenable to these, some of these?
Yeah, yeah.
Would someone care to answer that from the development team?
Sure, so I'll go ahead and offer this. I think their second presentation addresses these recommendations, I'm sure they have a response. And from, from my perspective, to follow up on where your line of questioning is going, all of these recommendations are the subject of the implementation contracts, but they were recommended by our financial advisor, so we thought it would be important for you to hear them and for us to discuss them tonight. But any of these additional recommendations would really come in the implementation documents.
Well, I'm okay waiting if we want to get through more of that to come back to it. Thank you.
We can wait, we can tee it up for later if they don't address the questions.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Mayor Patim Lopez.
Mayor, I just have a quick question, Mr. Bushak or the developer. So some of these public improvements, they were explained that they're, a lot of them are all within the premises on-site of their development, access roads that are created within their property, that eventually will feed into public streets. Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't some of those streets, you guys from that district, aren't they in Kansas City?
Yes.
In a different jurisdiction? Yeah, so how does that come into play? Yeah, so, yeah, so I think that's been confirmed, so how does that impact the other jurisdiction?
Um...
And are we paying for something that may be another jurisdiction?
Let me see if I can unpack your question. First, the CID can only fund improvements that are within its boundaries. So, so within the geographic limits of the CID, maybe I'll go back to their, I think they have a boundary map here, the only improvements that the CID can fund have to be within the boundaries of the CID. That is not the same for the city's sales tax contribution, the city, the limitation on the use of the city's extra sales tax contribution, if you approve that, is the natural limitation that applies to those dollars. So our general fund revenues can be spent on a wide variety of things. Our transportation sales tax, transportation only, capital improvement sales tax, capital improvements only. So if you approve that component of the request, we would, we will be making sure through the implementation that those dollars go to eligible costs, and sitting here right, standing here right now, some of them might be technically right outside the boundaries, but I guess the answer to your question is, the CID can only fund improvements within its boundaries, the city can only fund improvements that the city's sales tax dollars can be spent on, which may be in or outside the boundaries, depending on, you know, the particularities of right up here. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Little bit of gray area, but for now, for now, it does answer my question.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you. That's all I have for now, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I've got, I've got questions for our advisors.
Okay, would you like to do those now, or have the developer do their second presentation to address?
I want to ask a couple of questions while this is fresh in my mind, while you just went through it. Mr. Bushak, can you put it on slide number six?
My, our slides?
Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, do it on five first.
Okay.
One more, one more up.
Four.
Yeah, that one, sorry. Hello.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital, and?
And Jim Pritchard with Columbia Capital.
Mr. White and Mr. Pritchard, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the, this slide, I wanted the one that says the cap rate, I think that's maybe one more up. Yeah, so the cap rate is assumed at 8.5, and then you came down on this next slide, and you, you show these cap rates. The ones I'm interested in talking about are the incentivized IRR of 8.9 on the left, and then the incentivized IRR, which is the leveraged one on the right, of 8.3. So can you explain, because you had the cap rate of above, at 8.5, so then you've got this market return at 8.5 on the left with the unleveraged, but on the right, you said the target return is 12 to 15%. So I'm assuming that, similar to the cap, to the slide above, the, the leveraged target cap rate for Kansas City is in this 12 to 15 range?
Great question. And we, we have a, sort of a detailed description of this in our analysis. So the capitalization rate on an unleveraged basis is actually something that can be measured in the wild.
Measured in what?
It can be measured in the wild, right? So, and, and the way that's done is, we look at, we don't, but third-party real estate, commercial real estate companies actually collect data and report on it for actual sales in the market. So for instance, we, we look at this table at the bottom, the office cap rate for the fourth quarter of 2024 at 8.3%. This particular data provider looked at sales of actual office buildings throughout the Kansas City market. They know what the sale price is, and they gather data about what the net operating income on that particular property was, and the net operating income into the sale price gets you that, that capitalization rate. So they aggregate those data from all over the metro, and there's enough data from sales of office buildings, industrial warehouse buildings, retail strips of different sizes, kinds, and multifamily products, that they're able to gather this, aggregate them, and provide these, these, these actual average capitalization rates as we're looking at. So on an unleveraged basis, we can take this project's calculated unleveraged rate of return and compare those to the cap rates of these different types of asset classes in the, in the metro area. You'll notice in that table that there's not an actual cap rate calculated for sports facilities, right? There's just not enough of those transacting in Kansas City or probably any market to come up with what a cap rate would be on a specialty facility like that. And so one of the assumptions we make is, and you'll notice, the cap rate here is slightly higher for a specialty facility than it is for any of these other asset classes, and that's a, that is just a sort of an expert opinion on our behalf. You could argue, and the developer may, that the cap rate should be higher, but they won't have any data to support that either, because there aren't any, any of these, these types of specialty assets transacting in the market. With respect to leveraged returns, we don't have the same data available, and even if we did, it would be sort of meaningless, because you would need to know for every one of those properties that transacted in the, in that table on the previous slide, what the specifics of the loan were associated with those projects. And so when we say target return, we are looking at the fact that a risk-free rate of return today, if you look at a 10-year treasury, is right around 4.5%, a little bit higher, for a 30-year treasury, maybe closer to 5%. So if a risk-free rate of return for, for a treasury is 5, what would it take to induce private capital to come to a, not really arguably, definitely a riskier facility, right? They're building this facility, taking construction risk, and hoping that folks will come and use it and spend money. So there is risk there, it's not like buying a treasury security. Our, again, sort of expert opinion on this is that an additional return above the risk-free rate of return of somewhere between 7 and 10% would be sufficient to attract that capital. So when you look at the leveraged boxes on all these slides, keep in mind that that's our, that target return is our estimate of what it would take versus the market return where we're using capitalization rates that are collected from, from actual sales.
That's fine. I'm just wondering, you know, why you put it in here, because it's, because it's more of an art than, than the, the one on the left, I'm used to seeing nonstop, but the one on the right's a little different, the leveraged, and I understand it, I just don't see it for the reasons that you just gave, because of all the variables that are, you know, in the loans and more, so...
Mr. Mayor, it's really, really rare to see a development project that's 100% equity-financed, and so to only, to only rely on an unleveraged return is maybe more unfair than providing a leveraged return.
Okay.
And giving you a guess and telling you what we think is a, is a reasonable return.
Okay.
The other thing that we're seeing is where we are in the business cycle. Normally, you would expect a leveraged return, all things equal, to produce a higher rate of return than an unleveraged return. That's, that's generally why folks use leverage.
Right.
That is not the case often in the current market, and I think that's a feature of where we are in the business cycle. We're seeing very aggressive capitalization rates, and you see this particularly on the multifamily side. So you've got cap rates of 6 on the multifamily side, but developers are telling us that they're, they're needing to pay 8.5% for instance, to get loans on multifamily projects. And so you end up with leveraged returns, which are actually underperforming the unleveraged returns, which is, again, a little bit strange, but I think that's just a feature of where we are in the business cycle versus where interest rates are today.
Okay, so can we go to the next slide, then? Yeah, so you give, you've given a couple of options here, higher income, I'm assuming because they could bring in higher income, and you're like, okay, what's the likelihood? Or, you know, what, where are the biggest variables in their pro forma? And you're saying, well, they could bring in more operating income. And you're saying, you know, the whole thing with lower construction costs, I get that. What, what about, though, the fact that we're, this is a big ask on the incentive side, so what happens when you lower the incentive? Are you considering that lower income? I mean, would it reflect in, in your formula and come through as lower income? So it basically would be, in these situations, in the middle, I guess, it'd be the sensitive, sensitivity NOI, 125%. Let's just say it was more at 95% or 90%, let's say 95%. What are those numbers, I guess? Are they going to be lower than the ones on the left?
So as presented, would be, would be if the developer exactly hit its revenue target.
Right, on the left, the left column.
Yes, sir.
So if the, if the income came in less...
That, all things equal, that incentivized RRR, both of those returns would decline.
So let's, let's zero in on that 8.9% incentivized as presented, that's 8.9% incentivized unleveraged. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that one, if we lower the incentive, if it were lower, then that percentage would go down, because there'd be less income.
Should be reasonably linear, so if, if the NOI were 75%, we might expect that return to be closer to, what, seven and a half, or, sorry, six and a half?
Okay. The funny, that's hard for us, because we're not, like, you can only take in so much data at once, so we're not looking at NOIs on here, we're looking at total cost of the project, you know, with Mr. Bushak and such, so what kind of NOI are you talking about?
So this is the, NOI is basically the, the revenue production of the project versus the expenses of the project in any given year.
It's the net operating, I know what it is, but what, what's that amount?
What's the actual amount?
As presented. And I know that it's probably in those exhibits that have been presented to us, but you're talking about a lot of data here.
Couple of years in, 2.5 million, 2.7?
On the net, on the net basis.
This is the NOI.
Got it. Yeah, so roughly $2.7 million per year in net operating income at stabilization.
Okay. Okay. Hmm. It's really tough, can, you can't really wing it here and tell me, you know, like you said 75%, but you said 75% of NOI, you're not talking about, you're not talking about... Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm...
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to think on this while we move to the other ones, and I might have to call you back a little bit later.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and we, we present these to give you a sense of the impact of the developer sort of undershooting its expected net income from the project, and also the developer overshooting its projected costs, right? I, I don't think this, this has been fully designed or bid, we don't have a guaranteed maximum price, we don't know...
Well, as a council, we want to make sure that we take into consideration that this is, this is different, this is not office or warehouse or retail even. So we want to make sure that we're fair, and we want them to make a fair return.
Correct.
And you're saying that all things, you know, and you're showing us the different ways and the ways you've looked at it, and that it's, it's, it's fair and reasonable. Here's some things to keep in mind, that you want to make sure that this goes through, and before you, you know, approve this, implement these conditions and terms, I just want to make sure that... I just want to make sure that, um, that we're not, we're not trying to get them to an 8.9% incentivized return, and they end up with a, you know, 13 or 14%.
Correct. And we don't want that either. And part of the reason that, that I think David showed, the recommendations that we included in our analysis were to attempt to put boundaries around the development agreement to prohibit that, or at least decrease the odds considerably of that sort of outcome happening. And the, the, there's hard ways to do that, and there's easy ways. The easy ways are the measurable ways. How much did you actually spend on the project? You can see if they spend 20% less on the project than what we've used in our analysis, you can see the impact on the rate of return. And so, a fairly simple boundary to put on that is, at the end of your construction, show us what you actually spent. And if there's a material difference, then we're going to adjust the, the, a level of subsidy accordingly. If you'd, if you'd come to us with a $40 million project tonight, rather than a $50 million project tonight, the level of incentive the city would offer would likely be different. And so, we, we think that we can embed some fairly simple, simple guardrails in the development agreement to try to avoid the outcome that, that you've just suggested.
Okay. Mr. Bushak, can you address that real quick? Thank you, guys. Okay.
Yes. So, basically, all of their recommendations can become contract provisions if that's what you'd like. That's the simplest way.
Well, I'm not really, um, I'm not. Those, those are clawbacks, correct, correct?
They're.
To a degree.
Yeah, to a degree.
I mean, how enforceable are they?
Enforceable, if we write the contracts properly.
Okay.
What's that? And I will, I will mention this. Columbia Capital has expressed the impact of some of those conditions as a clawback, but I think his description that he just provided was probably the most accurate, which is, when you use the word clawback, it, it conjures up the image of you have to give us money back, and that's not what we're contemplating here. The way he described it was, if, instead of a 50 million project, if you build a 40 million project, we just, we ratchet down the incentives to match what you actually build. We're not clawing anything back.
It's an approval up to a certain percent or a certain amount.
Yes, that's the concept.
Approval up to, but not necessarily. Okay, thank you, sir. I'm gonna let some other people chime in, and then we'll do the other presentations. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused. When have we, have we, do we know, at, at least, I don't remember. Have we ever brought in a city financial advisor analysis for other projects?
Yes, we have.
When have we done that?
We've done it, we, we've used Columbia Capital or another financial advisor, Baker Tilly, on the Oldham Village project, Discovery Park, Streets of West Prior.
Okay, so we just, we don't have the same people, we, we are using different.
We've used Columbia Cap, so, from my memory, I think we, the city entered into a contract with Columbia Capital two or three years ago, and so, they're our first financial advisor, and then we have a second financial advisor if needed, that's Baker Tilly. And Columbia Capital, I think this is the fourth project that they've done this sort of analysis for us.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, why don't we do this for every project that comes and asks for an incentive, just so we can see more details in how it benefits and return on investment?
So, the answer is, for all of our TIF projects, we do. We engage, I don't know if that's accurate, almost all of our TIF projects, and especially the large ones. For the Colburn Ridge project, which was not tax increment financing, but was other tools, we also had a financial advisor analysis of that. And to answer your question, we typically reserve it for the larger projects where there's more focus on this as opposed to the smaller projects. We could do this sort of analysis more frequently for some of the more medium-sized or smaller projects, but we typically limit this analysis to the very biggest projects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I'm just kind of wrapping my head around this conceptually, so this is on the higher end of the incentives that we would typically do. And the reason for that is, big picture, that in order for them to get to the same levels of profitability as we would expect for other projects, to, to induce the investment, like, they say, if we don't see this kind of profit, we're just going to put our money into treasuries or whatever, right? That's kind of, but it, it would take less incentive, less money to get a different kind of project to this level of profitability. Typically, we would see a smaller incentive as percentage with a retail or, or other things that we oftentimes look at.
I would say yes, probably so. If this were a development that was more shopping center in nature, where there's more retail, then chances are the CID, sales tax generation, and, and maybe the request to the city wouldn't be as, as extensive as it is, and they probably would not be requesting 100% tax abatement for the, for the full constitutional limitation of 25 years because this, the project would generate more sales taxes. So, I think because this is a less sales tax generating project, that's essentially the answer to your question.
Okay. But even, even when we're looking at one that has more sales tax, the CID generates more, like, we still are seeing, like, a smaller percentage of total project cost in the entire global incentive package, right?
That's correct.
So, at the end of the day, it's kind of a question of, do we feel like this project is, is a big enough benefit to the community to justify requiring more incentives to get over the finish line than maybe something else that might develop in this area?
Yes, I think that's a fair assessment of what you're facing right now.
Okay. That's, that's helpful, because I think, like, what this is all saying is, like, this incentive package isn't making them more profitable than other projects necessarily, but it's still costing us more than it would to incentivize another similar-sized project.
Yes, I think that's probably the way for, for you as a decision-maker to think of it. The incentive request in this case is larger because of the income that this type of project would generate compared to the other projects that you typically see incentives and incentive requests for.
It's not as profitable, so it takes us more incentive to get them to profitability.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions right now.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Bushak, let's, um, let's have the applicant come forward again, and let's go to part two of this.
Again, that was exciting. So, I'm gonna not do the first slide in order. We're gonna keep going with the Columbia Capital analysis because the question got asked by council, councilmember Level, and so, we want to be responsive and also keep the momentum going while this is fresh in everybody's mind. So, um, I don't actually need the slides for this. I don't know how to go back. But anyway, um, the two items that council requested follow-up on were the financial performance, which Columbia Capital, Capital and Mr. Bushak just gave you. That presentation on, the developer provided all of their pro formas, all of their projections, everything that they expect to happen, and they were fairly aggressive in their projections in terms of, you know, maximizing what they think they'll be able to get in terms of the net operating income. And as Mr. Bushak mentioned, their report includes that the project requires incentives in order to produce a market rate of return, and that the project is unlikely, I, I am going to take you to that slide. Oh, crap. There we go. The project is unlikely to be over-incentivized under most combinations of the project's ultimate cost and its financial performance over time. So, that's what the stress test that they were, that they were reflecting, and that a market rate of return being 12 to 15% to attract investors to this project is kind of the target return. Columbia Capital is.
And that's, I hate to interrupt you, but that's from Mr. White and Mr. Pritchard?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And so, Columbia Capital, you know, they're very well-respected in the industry. I value their professional opinion. I have hotel, clients that develop hotels where they expect a much higher cap rate than that. So, I don't know if that is, we'll just put that there. But first, I wanted to remind council that the costs of the public incentives are not going to be fully recovered by the developer. Based on their projections of that 9.7 million of CID costs, they're going to recover 3.2 or somewhere even, maybe it's 2.7. In any event, they're at risk for those other $6 million of costs, and so, we would prefer to avoid clawbacks. You know, there are some recommendations in the report, and the, the first two recommendations, I guess, were to require the developer to have a letter of commitment from a lender showing $34.3 million of financing, and then, uh, letters of intent or something showing that they had raised the equity that was required by that, that bank's commitment letter. And we would prefer not to set the level of leverage by agreement. You know, if they're able to raise more money, we would borrow less, and that would be a good benefit to the project. And if we can't, then we can't. So, we certainly understand the requirement for you to have the developer show you that they have sourced all of the funds that they need in order to fund all of the development costs, but setting the percentage of leverage versus equity in the contract is problematic for those reasons.
Was that one of the recommendations?
Yes. The first two recommendations and the conclusions and recommendations.
I've got it up, I pulled it up.
Yeah. And then, the fourth, third recommendations find, the fourth recommendation, which related to the $49 million and the development costs coming in substantially lower. So, the report effectively found that even if the total development costs came in 20% lower, which is an impossibility, that the rate of return to the developer was still within the target range. There was one that went up to 17%. So, I, I, I guess if, if that is part of the definitive agreement that ends up being memorialized with the city, we would ask that you define what is material, and we would ask for that to be 20% or higher.
That, uh, let me just jump in. That wasn't my line of questioning, though. I wasn't talking about construction costs. But those, those recommendations, I appreciate you addressing them. Could you maybe pull them up for everybody to see so that they kind of know what you're talking about? Cause this is a pretty complex one.
You're gonna have to show me how to steer.
And I, I wasn't recommending clawbacks. I used the term, I used the term Mr. Bushak was saying. He wouldn't define it as clawback based on what he said a minute ago. It was up to. So, are you, I want to make sure you and him are on the same page as far as terminology.
Yeah, I, I think so. I think, well, I guess, on some of the recommendations, it definitely did specifically recommend clawbacks based off of performance and net operating income being higher than we're projecting. And that, I think, is difficult to administer for city staff to keep track of an operating business's net operating income over time. So, we would certainly not like to see those types of clawbacks in the agreement. On the, the abatement side, I think that that's exactly what he's saying, that the abatement would come up to a certain investment amount and would apply to the investment within that amount.
Okay.
And, and I.
So, you're okay with the first one here? On the screen?
The proof of financing? So, that is, the first two there are the ones that I was referring to, where we would prefer that it just instead indicate that, that we have all of the sources of funds needed to construct the project. Not that we have a loan commitment level for 34.3 million and equity for the balance, but rather that we have the sources and provide evidence that is reasonably approved by the city, that we've got all the money that we need to construct the project, instead of setting the levels of equity and leverage by contract, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it makes sense, but that's not their recommendation, but that's fine.
Yeah, so I guess what we're looking for is for council to provide staff with direction so when the, the time comes for definitive agreements to be in place, that they know kind of what council's thinking on these recommendations.
Okay, but what about the second one? Proof of equity commitment? You were saying that that one also is.
Yeah, it's, it says that the provide, the, the amount of equity required in the lender's commitment level, letter. So.
It's kind of like saying what your down payment's going to be.
Yeah, I, yes, but if they're able to raise more, can we not violate a provision in the development agreement? I guess it's, so, if we end up borrowing 60% instead of 70%, I don't want us to be in violation, a technical default, under the development agreement.
Okay, makes sense, okay.
And then, yeah, this certification of eligible costs, we're totally okay with that. The certification of the total development costs with incentive clawbacks imposed if actual costs are materially less, again, that's, what, what, it, the, the general phrasing that was used in the report said that, says incentive clawbacks if, if they're materially less. So, what would specifically be clawed back? Has the city clawed back incentives before or decreased abatement levels? And can you point us to what some of those projects are? And if a clawback will apply, I think we need to have guidance from council on what is material for purposes of coming in under 49 million.
Okay.
The performance requirements, we just need more guidance on, on what those are, and if you've imposed detailed performance requirements and clawbacks associated with performance, you know, certainly finishing the project by a specific date, not having an open-ended agreement where the city's going to be giving these incentives out for, you know, 10 or 15-year period when the developer drags his feet and doesn't deliver what they're supposed to be delivering. So, having a, you know, a schedule, I think, is, is reasonable, but any other performance requirements, we'd really like some guidance from council on what those would consist So, I, I think that was it on, on the, the clawbacks. I did also, excuse me, Justin, the client, reminded me that they had marketed this property to multiple developers for commercial, multifamily purposes, and nobody wanted it, which is why they were able to secure the contract from the church. And I think it's because of the, you know, difficulties with the development and access and all of those reasons, but just for what that's worth, we did want to mention that since it came up as part of the, part of the council presentation by the city. Do we need anything else on this before I?
Um, no. Like, I feel like we're still talking about the first presentation, though, are we?
Yes.
Okay, then, since you opened it up, cause you, you were supposed to come up and talk about the second part, which is fine.
Yep.
Now, now I get to ask Mr. Bushak a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I just, this is, this is, I can't close the regular session, so I have to be careful how I word this, but I showed a lot of, like, yes, bring this forward. Yes, we want to see this. Yes, there looks like there could be a return on investment. We've got a lot of numbers here. We've got our capital fund advisors are telling us it's reasonable, but then we've got all these recommendations from them, and that's not been, like, we, we're not used to negotiating from the dais here. I don't want to negotiate from the dais.
Yes.
That's, you're the best. You go negotiate this. This is not ready for presentation tonight, is what I'm feeling.
So, here's my comment on their recommendations, and we actually, as a staff team, we discussed, should we put before you the recommendations of Columbia Capital or not tonight, knowing that those are contract issues which come later? And the decision was collectively, yes, we think we should present these to you so there's a full discussion of these. But I will say this, and I'll emphasize this again, those are contract issues. Whatever feedback we receive from you tonight, we can't negotiate all of these conditions from, from the podium here, that's not the intention. It's to educate you on what their recommendations were, so you're more educated about how, how all this works. And the feedback that you provide to us tonight collectively, we can take into account when we negotiate these issues, but you don't need to resolve all of those conditions tonight.
I got opinions on some of them, but I.
That's fine.
And not necessarily to the developer's detriment. I mean, I want to protect ourselves, but I just, like, I just feel like this went a different path than, I, I, these aren't the decisions we typically make. We, we give you a, a direction, like you're saying, and the charge, and then you go and you take it. It doesn't feel right with the developer saying to us that they're not comfortable with some of these things, you know, in this format. I just, I know that developers say that to you every day when they're negotiating with you, but not, they don't do that with us. So, I can try to move on to the second presentation, but I'm telling you that I feel like, um, I feel like I need you to say, yeah, we can work these things out or something for me to even want to work, you know, continue this, or otherwise, I'm going to push this to, to another date.
Sure.
Right here, right now.
Yes, so that was exactly the issue that we debated as a staff team, whether we should emphasize and discuss those recommendations in detail tonight or not. And, and one of our options was to, to not mention them to you, in which case, we wouldn't having, we wouldn't be having this discussion about the recommendations. But we decided to affirmatively do that, so you're more educated about them. And, like I said, whatever feedback you provide, I can certainly take that into account in our negotiations, but it's not the intention to come to a resolution of all six conditions tonight, all six recommendations that Columbia Capital's advanced.
Okay. I, I feel like I got answers from our advisors, but on the numbers, but not this stuff. I, I, this, we can't make decisions on tonight as a council, so we can try to give you directions, Mr. Bushak, but we can't make decisions on that portion.
Sure, I understand. And the actions that the council will be taking, if you move forward, there's only two ordinances in front of you tonight. It's to approve the CID petition, and then approve the Chapter 100 plan, and all the other details that we're talking about in these recommendations are all matters for the contracts which come later. So, your two action items tonight are just, should you approve the petition or not, and should you approve the Chapter 100 plan or not?
I'll try to stay, I think, I'm trying to say I'm gonna try. I'll try to stay, I think, I'm trying to say I'm gonna try to stay in my lane rather than dive into the weeds of all this because that's what I've done. I understand that. But it was presented to us, so I had to.
Yes.
So, um, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. So David, what I think is that you put those in there so we can say, yeah, we like them or no, we don't. So I'm gonna tell you, yeah, I like them. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
We're, we're supposed to leave our opinions till outside of the public hearing, and I was really careful. All right. Everybody, no opinions right now. Let's finish this public hearing. I'll close it and then we can, all right. All right. Let's go to part two. Ms. Rachel.
Okay. Now we're gonna move on to the industrial development project, the Chapter One Hundred approval portion. Again, we're gonna reiterate some of the things that came from our March eighteenth meeting, um, in the conceptual presentation, uh, just to bring those, uh, those, those concepts front of mind for the, for the council. So the proposed developer is Three D Builders KC. They're based here in Lee's Summit. Um, they have collective experience, uh, that's significant in construction, remodeling, real estate development, property management. And Justin Beebe and Scott Wheatley are their managers. As we mentioned last time, uh, they both have children who compete in youth sports, so they've got a vested interest in this project succeeding. They've partnered with some other team members that will ensure that this is a state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line facility that ends up being, uh, constructed, including Finkel and Williams Architecture, Meyer Brothers Building, Engineering Solutions and the Sports Facilities Advisory. Wanted to remind council that, of the Sports Facilities Advisory because they are the leading national consultant, developer and manager of indoor and outdoor sports complexes, um, and they are the consultant on this particular project. Again, some more of the features of the project that we discussed. These shows the cutting-edge features of the complex. I'm not gonna read all of them, but again, reiterating that there's an indoor FIFA regulation-sized soccer field, which would make this unique to the region. Nobody else has one of those, um, within, I think, West Des Moines, Iowa, I think is the closest. And then there's another outdoor FIFA regulation-sized soccer field of five thousand square foot, um, physical rehab facility, as well as the ten thousand square foot family entertainment center with the arcade and indoor playground, golf simulators, and a total investment in the city of Lee's Summit of forty-nine point two-five million dollars. Going through some of the, um, the floor plans for the industrial development project, this is the main level, again, open to the courts and the fields below with the mezzanine above, the arcade, the lobby and the cafe are all on this level. The lower level's got the basketball and volleyball courts, the remaining portion of the family entertainment center, the speed agility and training area, as well as that indoor FIFA fi- FIFA, uh, field. And then we'll flip through these pretty quickly because you've already seen them. But this is the exterior rendering that was prepared by Finkel and Williams. And the lobby entrance, inside the front door, the mezzanine area, the courts down below, another angle there, you can see the family entertainment center in the background. There's that indoor FIFA field with the mezzanine seating above. And the exterior area that shows the exterior FIFA field, as well as those five pickleball courts that are against the building. So we're looking at the same matrix again. This time we're focusing on the Chapter One Hundred incentives specifically, including the sales tax exemption on construction materials and the real property tax abatement. Uh, the present value of the sales tax exemption on construction materials, um, is one point six million dollars. And as Mr. Bushak just described as part of his presentation, the city's portion of that is about three hundred thousand dollars. On the fourteen million dollar, fourteen point seven million dollar present value of the real property tax abatement, uh, the city's portion is two point four million, and that is over a period of twenty-five years. So as, as we've also discussed, you know, there are other municipalities in other states where they've got different tools at their disposal there. They can provide upfront financing of project costs. Um, and this upfront financing significantly lowers the risk to the vel- developer, but increases the risk to the municipality. And so with the limited tools that we have in Missouri, we have to get creative. And Chapter One Hundred is the tool that we're using to try to get closer to and approximate some of those, um, incentives that are being offered by other municipalities for similar projects nationally. For those of you who may not be familiar with Chapter One Hundred, um, bond transactions, as, uh, Mr. Bushak mentioned, no debt is being issued. There are no bonds. The city is not giving a pledge of its full faith and credit. It's not pledging any revenue sources. Um, it's strictly a paper transaction in order to achieve the sales tax exemption on construction materials and the real property tax abatement. We've already beaten this one to death. Um, yes, all we were wanting was opinions of council. So sorry for making you feel like we were not going to be accepting of any contract provisions that the city were, were to propose in terms of clawbacks. We just wanted to give you our feelings and then get opinions from council on what your opinions were related to those so that staff had guidance, um, as we negotiate those agreements. I agree Dave Bushak is, is great at negotiations, so that's his job. The other presentation follow-up that you asked us to provide was incentive packages for other, uh, Midwestern sports complexes that are similar to this one. And we were able to source that information from the Sports Facilities Advisory because they have consulted, developed and managed, um, projects nationwide. The top three that are in black are the ones that we showed you at the last council presentation, at the conceptual presentation. The ones that are in blue that are below those are the new comparable projects. And we've, uh, plugged them in as, 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 as well as we could into this format to provide the incentive percentage of the project costs. Um, so you can see that the next lowest, uh, in terms of the percentage of project, percent of, of incentives as a percentage of the total project cost is the Springfield, Illinois project and West Des Moines, Iowa, which are in the fifty-five percent range, and then the others ratchet up from there. Um, this, uh, should hopefully solidify for council, uh, the conclusions that we provided at that conceptual presentation that this, um, incentive request is in line with and in most cases below, uh, comparable projects that are being developed. So I believe that answers all the supplemental requests that were made by council, but we're certainly happy to answer any questions or source additional information to the extent that is, um, needed or, or requested by council. Um, so with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Christine Bushyhead. She's going to discuss the project impact and include, conclude the developer's presentation for the Chapter One Hundred portion of this public hearing.
Good evening. Oops, wrong way. Okay. So, um, I had the opportunity with Justin Beebe of our team to meet with Dr. Buck and Dr. Shelton of the school district to discuss the project. We kind of had that conversation that, that Rachel just kind of mentioned, and that is that under the Chapter One Hundred use for this particular project, the city doesn't actually issue bonds. And there isn't actually any kind of commitment or, uh, payment of bonds by the city, uh, from GO obligation or user fee. And, um, the developer bank is actually involved in the transaction. There's no interest advantage to the use of, of industrial development bonds financing this project. And again, the, the advantage of using that is the real property tax abatement and the sales tax exemption on construction materials. We also tried to discuss with the school district the distinction of this pro- of this indoor sports facility as a, as a community asset, which we've talked about a lot. And, but we were greeted with essentially all tax abatement incentives are the same regardless of what it's for. Um, we totally respect, that's the position of the school district and understand that they're concerned about revenue. Um, and um, we get that. Um, we, um, we did say to them and just said to them that we would consider to see if there was anything that we could offer, um, from the project, uh, after the review of the Columbia Capital report, uh, which unfortunately for the district confirmed the reality that we've been saying, and that is that, as publicly been stated by the developer, uh, without the requested incentives, the project just doesn't happen. But we appreciate the importance of considering all factors, um, when, uh, when approving a real property tax abatement. And in that regard, and trying to better understand any potential school district impact, re-researched, uh, the district's demographic and enrollment data to present to you in this public hearing to provide a bit of foundational information, give you a comfort level to, 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 uh, agree to the level that we're looking for in this particular special project. The project plan assumptions result in a projection, the school district portion of the twenty-five years at a hundred percent at seventeen million, two hundred and nine thousand, nine twenty-five. Um, but the net present value of that number is eight point two million over the twenty-five years. The expectations for this particular site, and we mentioned this before, uh, of the taxing districts has been minimal. It's been agriculturally zoned and has been vacant, um, or agricultural use, um, since twenty sixteen. It's not-for-profit. There's zero taxes coming from here. The school district's consultants is applied economics, and I'm gonna speak to them and their reports. Um, and their land use assumption for this particular piece of land for decade, for, for a long time, since I only, I only read from twenty eighteen forward, so I can't say decades, but they always showed this as a, uh, single-family residential development for this particular, uh, site. The, um, the additional school demographics and enrollment information from their consultants are as follows. In the school year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there were eighteen thousand and seventy-seven students, an all-time high for this, for the LSR seven school district. In school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, there are seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty students. So six years later, we have six hundred and ninety-seven less students, uh, to educate and, and have to underwrite the financing for, um, as taxpayers. The district has not recovered from fluctuations in attendance since twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, which is according to the, uh, applied economics. In February of twenty twenty-four, Applied Economics reported to the board that, uh, of their twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four update, that over the last three years, the district has only added a net fifteen students over the last three years. From the December fifth, twenty twenty-three written report of Applied Economics, I quote, "While a majority of this four-year loss can be attributed to the anomalies, anomalous effect of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, it does not appear that the age, it does appear, excuse me, it does appear that the aging of the existing population, slow housing turnover, and an increase in education alternatives is limiting enrollment growth in the district." AE Applied Economics also consistently reports that much of the, quote, "New and planned multifamily housing consists of luxury, high amenity apartment units that will not have a significant impact on the school-aged population or enrollment." And in their written report, um, they also were projecting, and this was their twenty twenty, uh, three report, twenty-four report, um, that building permits were actually down forty-one percent in the city of Lee's Summit. So we're not creating kids for the, for the school district. We're down from what our high was. Um, and so those are, I thought, important information for you. In addition to and in contrast to this reduction in student enrollment.
Ms. Bushyhead, we don't want to keep going on the school district. This, we, we, we're staying in our lane on this.
Well, no, I, I'm giving you foundational information so you can feel comfortable in giving us an eight point two million dollars of the school district's money.
Yeah.
Knowing that we're not gonna significantly impact them. But let me do, okay, I will, I will draw this to a close very quickly here. Uh, always keep in mind that it's Lee's Summit and portions of Kansas City, Greenwood, Blue Springs, Lake Winnebago, Lake Lotawanna, and unincorporated county of Jackson that contributes financially. And there have been significant assessments and increases in residential and commercial development in all those areas of the district. Um, it's reasonable to assume that, done with school district. It's also reasonable to assume, going to our slides, that there is going to be additional development along that commercial piece there, along, um, View High Drive. Um, and after, that is the church property that is inside the CID. So that's gonna be additional commercial development, um, to, for tax-paying commercial development. Um, and therefore we believe that it's absolutely right time to approve in this, a twenty-five year industrial development, real property tax abatement for this unique property. So going on to and kind of reminding what we talked about back in Mar- in, um, at our conceptual presentation, just kind of remember where we were at that time, why there was such excitement about this. Um, we talked about the fact that this is a destination youth sports indoor complex, that the realization of this is, is View High becoming this, this place of activity with Fred O'Manas Golf, Frank White Baseball, Longview Lake, Longview Community Center, Future Parks and Recreation Master Plan, active areas, um, the MCC Longview Theater and the Paragon Star Sports Complex. It's a corridor of positive lifestyle, intergenerational play, a cultural community that is active and vibrant. That is our Lee's Summit. It's also a very difficult place to get that kind of activity going because it is on that border. And so of Kansas City and Lee's Summit, since it's difficult to get to develop when you have those multiple jurisdictions. The industrial development project is new to the marketplace, to Lee's Summit, to Eastern Jackson County. The View High, uh, entertainment, this, sports entertainment facility has a local marketplace economic impact, and we have tournament travel, which we talked about again in the conceptual, original conceptual conversation. Our team invited the city council to act boldly and bring this new level of product to Lee's Summit, um, that ups our game in the metropolitan area. Frankly, there, as, as Rachel, uh, spoke, there are essentially very limited tools to support this type of project in Missouri to incentivize and make financially feasible. This View High Sports Entertainment Project is distinguishable and not a precedent setting. This is low, low risk. Um, unlike any, unlike star bonds, unlike any other kind of financing where, uh, that, that depends on the, a generation of income from sales taxes. And we talked about that. We, we talked about the fact that these types of projects are not huge sales tax generators. That's not what they are. Um, so with those ideas in mind, um, we believe that this city, we would like it to act similarly in this industry as it has in past. Um, in the past, this city decided to incentivize Summit Woods and actually bring the first retail shopping center to the city of Lee's Summit, and it, and made a thirty-nine point seven million dollar investment. Then they decided to bring soccer and a sports complex with a Paragon Star investment of twenty-five million dollars. Now we're asking you to bring to this community basketball, volleyball, indoor soccer for our families, for practice, for games. Make this yet another piece of our destination, um, youth, youth sports and travel industry for Lee's Summit. So we respectfully request that you take all of that into consideration. Thank you for letting us talk again about what happened in, in our, in our conceptual presentation, because sometimes people don't tune in in March, or they tune in in June and go, oh, where did this come from? So thank you for your, your patience in that. But we would really respectfully request approval, both the CID and the Chapter One Hundred that's been presented to you. And if there's any other, uh, issues that we need to address, we'd appreciate an opportunity to address public comments, the public comments as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bushak, that was part two. So do you have a part two?
No, sir. My presentation covered the entire incentive package, so I've already covered everything that I think I need to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr., or Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as I'm trying to think through the benefit to the city, um, it seems like it's, it's sort of a combination of, of induced tourism and then services for existing residents, which would make sense, because we're not getting a lot of, um, tax revenue from it, right? And this isn't an opinion. I'm just trying to kind of frame out what we're talking about, right? That we're.
Yes.
But like what we've been presented, presented so far is like, right now the site generates no real property tax. And during the incentive period, it'll generate no real property tax. Right now it generates no sales tax. During the incentive period, it'll generate a little bit of sales tax because we're giving some of that back to the developer, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, is just to frame my question of, I want to understand a little bit about the tourism. the tourism impacts. What size tournaments can you host at a facility like this? How many families do you expect to attend in a weekend? What percentage of those are from outside the area? And how many of them do you think will stay in Lee Summit? I know that that's a lot of questions all at once, but I, to me, that seems like the information I want to know to be able to understand the real benefit to the city.
We're gonna, we've got the economic impact slides from the conceptual presentation that we can put up, and we'd be happy to walk back through those, because I think that's an important consideration for the development.
And I, and I kind of remember looking at those, but just sort of wondering where those numbers came from. Like, how, how many, how many soccer teams could you host here in a weekend? How many basketball teams or volleyball teams?
They came from the Sports Facilities Advisory based off of the data that they've extrapolated from other similar facilities in similar metropolitan, similarly sized metropolitan areas that have the types of facilities that are being constructed here. So I have it really small, but I don't have, can we put it on there?
Oh.
I guess I did. Doc, Cam. I'm going to be able to run all your tech stuff before the night is over. Let me just throw it there, and then I'll turn it the other way. And I think we can zoom in. Oh. Trying to zoom in. So in terms of the number of teams and things of that nature, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Man, this is backwards, so sorry about that. But what this kind of illustrates is the number of non-local days in market and, and room nights. So those are people who are not local, who are traveling to the market, and then the room nights are the number of nights that people are expected to stay in hotels that are traveling to the facility for events and tournaments. And then it shows at the bottom, the economic impact, not only from hotel stays, but also from shopping, retail, restaurants, all the, other things that they do while they're in town, not just the hotel specifically. So 6.1 million a year. And then also to clarify, the sales taxes that will occur at the facility, you're sharing a portion of those with the developers, a reimbursement, the, the remainder would go to you. And then the economic impact and the sales taxes that would be generated from these, as well as the business and industry tax generated from the room nights, all of that is...
Right. And that's what I'm trying to get at, the room nights, because that's where more of the impact is coming to us. So, so the non-local days in market, year one, 44,649. So that's how many people, how many people days are coming to Lee Summit because of this?
In year one, yes.
In year one. So that, just doing the quick math, that's 120 people on average per day, you know, 44,000 divided by 365. So I'm just trying to get an idea for, like, how many people come to a tournament? Is this a realistic number?
We'll let Justin speak to that.
Justin Beebe, I'm one of the managers for the development. So we have 12 courts, so that's 24 teams per hour for a volleyball tournament. So you could easily host a 96-team tournament. So on the ball, on the soccer side, what we've been negotiating is 7v7 inside for weekends, 9v9 outside, so that's 10 teams per hour during the day. So theoretically, you could run both of those at the same time. So we're anticipating somewhere between 1,000 to 1,500 people in the facility every weekend. And we're projecting tournaments, two tournaments per month minimum. So besides that, it'd be full every night. We've already signed the lease with the soccer club for every night of the year, either indoor or outdoor, so.
No, that's, that's, that's really what I was trying to get at, is, is so, so you could host, you said, how many volleyball teams at once?
I think we could easily go up to 96 teams. I mean, I think most of the tournaments would be...
Okay. And each, and each team has several players and parents and siblings and who are all going along?
And I think as part of the, maybe the parking analysis that we provided, went through how many, I guess, players there would be for each type of event, and then how many family members there are, which I think it was 3.2 family members per player, maybe it was 2.2, I can't remember offhand.
Okay.
But we went through basically what the occupancy projections were for different types of events, and that was the basis that we used to come up with our number of parking spots that were required. So I don't know if we have that in our information, but we can certainly provide that again. The city may, may have that, I don't know.
And then for the, the room nights and the shopping, the eating, and all that, do you expect that to be kind of half and half between Kansas City and Lee Summit? Or is there any way to really predict that at this point?
I, I don't have a, I would think that most of that would occur in Lee Summit, because if you're thinking of going to Kansas City, I'm not sure where you'd go as far as proximity, travel time, because I'm thinking Braytown Road, Blue Springs Boulevard, Blue Ridge Boulevard, I don't, you know, you'd be going to Grandview or Bannister area, or over into Kansas. So I would expect that most of that activity would, would come to Lee Summit. And, and so the economic impact numbers and the room nights, the cost per person per night, all of that came from the Sports Facility Advisory, which was the national consultant that we used, which is based on the data they collect from the 70 facilities that they run around the country.
Okay. And then this would be, is this the same data that you use when you're preparing your own pro forma to think about what your profitability will be and, and all your projections?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's the actual question I wanted to answer. All right. I think those are my questions right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor. This would be for, I think it was Mr. White with Columbia Capital. So why might it, why would it be important? Let's say you weren't concerned, you weren't overly concerned, or maybe you can explain this with debt to equity, but why would a city want proof of private financing commitment beforehand? So, you know, why is that important to us?
We think it's important to you to know that the project can actually be built. And really, that's the intention of those two bullets together. It wasn't to say, in this particular case, oh, you've got to have a 70% loan to equity ratio, as we, as we demonstrated. We think it sort of any mix, reasonable mix of debt versus equity, the rate of return works out okay. So it's really a measure of, you told us you were going to build this project, can you get the financing and actually build it?
Gotcha. And not unheard of in, in developments like that. Maybe, Mr. Bushak, have we done that before with previous developments where we've had some sort of proof of financing or, because I know we haven't done it in the past, and we've, I could think of some past projects where we ran into some issues.
I've used some of these tools and other, for other projects in other cities. We had a project here where some of those conditions were in play, and then they went away. So I think the answer is, no, it's not common in Lee Summit.
Okay.
And, and I think the main reason for that, I mean, aside from all the details and the uniqueness of this project, in other circumstances where the city is being requested to issue debt or take on some risk, there's a heightened desire to make sure that the project's going to happen the way it's represented. And the reason I think that Columbia Capital is doing that tonight is for the very reasons we've talked about, which is this is a unique project, and their goal in making those recommendations to us is to make sure that when the developers start certifying costs for reimbursement under that component of the project, they actually deliver a 49 million dollar project and not a 25 or 30 million dollar project. That's, that's the concept.
Okay. Thanks. One other question I had, and it might be for Mr. Park, but so I know that in, that you're going to just be able to stay out of this one. So some of the incentive is going to public improvement. I think it was kind of that road, maybe that access road that would go out to Chipman, is that correct?
Michael Park, Director of Public Works. So they had a combination of public improvements that were listed. Some, I think, were called public improvements, though they would privately maintain, like a detention basin. There's a turn lane, the question came about, you know, is this partly in Kansas City? I think there's a turn lane that's in that public improvement package that is on View High in Kansas City. But for the most part, those public improvements that are transportation-related are these internal roads that service the site itself between or south of Chipman and east of View High.
If this attraction generated significant more traffic, causing issues on View High, where you needed maybe a, a left, a left out, or right out, or light, or anything that, like, would we have any ability? Because that's all Kansas City, right?
That is all Kansas City. Kansas...
So if that thing got...
They, they had studied that in consultation with the city of Kansas City, and it was prepared in the packets associated with the development application. A traffic signal would not be supported based on the, the opinions of the Kansas City staff due to the traffic signal that's already installed there at Chipman and View High, and a future traffic signal that even I think on some of the materials presented tonight is down at 109th Street and View High. And so where you would be positioned is if you need more access, it's likely that access has to come from somewhere to the south. And this development is, in a way, I would say, preserving the opportunity for them to access down to 109th as future development south of them occurs.
Gotcha. Okay. Great. That's it. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the question for the applicant is, just for clarification in my, my mind, I think it was mentioned during your presentation that the only way this project can happen is the way the incentive package is presented to us tonight.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if we were to say we would do 90% versus 100%, there's no way it could happen?
No, not with the current financial projections, it's not able to move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Other questions from, or, I guess, yeah, we're still in the public hearing, so questions from council? Councilmember Carl out.
Thank you. The CID boundary, is that, all of that property owned by the developer?
It's all, it's all owned by the church.
Will it be owned by the developer if this goes through?
I'll let her answer.
Good question. At about 5:30 this afternoon, we closed on the purchase of the land from the church to the south, so there's 17 acres that are now owned by the developer as of today. The rest of it will continue to be owned by the Summit Church.
And that's the land that's in front of the church that you're...
Yes.
Putting in the boundary and looking for pad sites?
That's right.
So would, in your ideal world with this, those pad sites are going to continue to be owned by the church, and the church will sell them to individuals? It's never going to be owned by this developer, and this developer will develop those out?
No, there's no plans. So the 15 acres that's to the south of Northwest Ashurst is where the project is going to be developed. There's a two-acre pad site just to the north of Northwest Ashurst, at the corner of View High and Northwest Ashurst, that also got acquired by the developer. That is part of the 49.25 million. That's a future development, probably retailer, restaurant, to support the project. And then the other four acres, the developer has no, we're not under contract, there's no option, there's no intention to buy it. The church is planning, I believe, in the future to sell it, but they want to control the use of what goes in there. They've received an indication of interest from somebody who learned about the project that, thank you, that they'd, they'd heard about the project, and they were interested in possibly putting something there, and it involved a bar, and so the church, that kind of fizzled. So, but yeah, I think that that's probably their plan, is to, to hold them after these public improvements get put in there. The reason why they agreed to join and be part of the CID and to submit the petition is because they're gaining additional parking, they're gaining some, you know, the public road between Northwest Chipman and Northwest Ashurst is technically something that the church agreed to do when they had their PDP submitted in 2008 or '09. And so including that land and the boundaries was sort of our agreement, that we'll do these improvements, that'll increase the value of your project, it'll create pad-ready sites that are primed for development, and then hopefully, you know, again, field of dreams, if you build it, they will come. It's kind of the...
So if, if that turns out to be multifamily, that's not going to help you guys at all? So really, you're, you're letting the church have control over what develops there, and you're just hoping that it develops to help you?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to move forward. If you have more questions, it's, okay? Councilmember Hodges?
So I, I, I'm kind of hung up on the, the clawback thing that we're talking about. So can you just explain to me more? Because I feel like a lot of times when we're up here, we're always like, oh, we want to do what's fair, or we won't, we don't want to set up new precedents, and then we didn't do it for the rest. So, and I feel like we also say a lot of things, like, we would like for, if we're going to give an incentive to a developer, we would like for it to say certain things in there, and I think of multifamily off the top of my head, where we're like, oh, we would like for them to not be able to sell it, or sell it right away, and just benefit off of the city's contribution. So I guess I'm, like, help me understand why we're so set on doing this for this development specifically? Because I don't feel like we're this honed in on any other development like this. So what am I missing?
Well, in, when Columbia Capital has provided their analysis of previous projects, they've given recommendations in the past, we haven't highlighted them to the extent that we're discussing them tonight, but these sort of issues are always present when we negotiate the implementation contracts. So I think the best answer to your question right now is, we're talking about this extensively because this is the opportunity to do so for a unique project, and obviously, there's a lot of interest, I mean, based on the discussion that's happened tonight, there's a lot of interest in this issue. But to answer your question, we have, Columbia Capital has done this type of analysis in other projects, this has been taken into account in our negotiations. As an, this is where I could go off on a tangent and go down a rabbit hole and, and talk about something that's not really relevant to this project extensively, but I'll just say this. As an example, this type of issue exhibited itself in the Discovery Park project, and we built in a specific restriction on the reimbursement and the use of TIF revenues and the developer's reimbursement to ensure that they completed the retail components while they completed the apartment components. Because what we didn't want to end up with was a field of apartments and no retail. So that's a, a very short summary of a specific example of where these issues came into play, but you didn't hear a lot about them because the Discovery Park project, you know, close to a billion-dollar project, and there's lots of other issues you dealt with, and that was a relatively minor issue and a large project. This is a unique project, there's some very specific recommendations, and again, I'll emphasize, the main focus of these additional recommendations is only to have contract provisions to ensure that if you say yes to this incentive package, they actually deliver what they're representing to you tonight.
Okay. So going off, I appreciate that explanation. So when I'm looking at places like Blue Hawk, Recplex, and there's the other ones that they mentioned, so how, I guess my question is, how are we not able to see, okay, these are relatively new and established, some more than others, the same kind of concept? So how are we not able to take that data and use it here to say, these are going well? I mean, I pass them all the time, we use them all the time, they're booming. So I guess I'm confused on why we're acting like this is, this has a high likelihood of failing, or, or treating it as such is kind of what I feel like is happening. So I guess I don't understand where we're, we're getting that when we have data from places that aren't very far from us. So...
Sure. So maybe it would, it might help for me to walk through, let's see, let me, let me pull these recommendations back up and then walk through them, because I think that's what we're focused on. So the first two conditions are basically proof of financing. So we could collapse those down into, set aside the equity versus loan ratios, which is what the developer seemed to be indicating they have a problem with. The takeaway from the first two conditions is, we want you to demonstrate that you have the financing for this full project for you to qualify for your incentives. Pretty simple. The third condition, certificate of public improvement costs, I heard them say they have no problem with that. The, the fourth condition, certificate of total development costs, their counter to this was, that's difficult, it's hard to tally this up. If Streets of West Prior can do it, I think other projects can. This is a, a single or two-use project, I don't think it's going to be difficult to tally up your development costs, and yes, it's more paperwork, yes, it's more difficult for staff, but it's something that our financial advisor is recommending we do. The fifth condition, performance requirements, the question was, what would that look like? The answer to that is the other slide that they showed you, all the different components of the project, what goes inside, what goes outside, how many courts, square footage. The performance standard would basically be, you have to build these things that you've represented tonight on your slide to qualify for the incentive package. And then the sixth condition, mandatory schedule, is, is fairly straightforward, you need to build it by the time you said you're going to build it.
Okay. Yeah, no, those make, those make sense, so I appreciate you going through each one of those. But that was just kind of my, my main question, was just, it just feels different than other presentations to me, and I wasn't quite sure why. So I just kind of want to understand, it just...
Yes.
I mean, I know that you've gone into plenty of detail on other ones, very, you're always very thorough, and I always appreciate it, but it just, this one feels like we're zooming in a lot more than other ones.
I agree. And like I said...
I mean, I know that you've gone into plenty of detail on other ones, very, you're always very thorough, and I always appreciate it, but it just, this one feels like we're zooming in a lot more than other ones.
I agree. And like I said a couple times, we did debate whether we should talk about these additional recommendations tonight or not. If we hadn't put those, these in front of you, there probably wouldn't be any discussion of these additional recommendations. But the point I want to emphasize is, they have made these recommendations for us before. We have taken these into account in the negotiations. And for a larger project, issues like this are smaller, but we have taken them into account as we negotiated. And while we're talking about them tonight, this seems to be the primary focus, and the council's weighing, should you provide this hefty incentive request in exchange for this unique project?
Okay. So like you said in my last time I asked you questions, we're only doing this, the city financial advisor analysis in public when it's a large incentive ask?
Yes, that's a fair conclusion. We do it for our tax increment financing plans, and we have done it for the larger projects. Or where the council has shown an interest in having that kind of analysis. And one thing that I'll mention is, when we had the conceptual presentation for Colburn Ridge Project, that's where we heard your feedback that we'd like to see this type of analysis, and we did that in that case.
Okay. I guess me, I guess, speaking personally, I feel like this would almost be helpful to see on, I know it might be more work, but on every project. And I say the ask for an incentive, because I feel like at the end of the day, it's still taxpayer dollars that aren't going to go somewhere or whatever. I just feel like this spells out more options or what opens, you know, a broader view of what we could be asking for the incentive we're going to give.
Yes.
So I just feel like it would be more conducive to apply that to everyone, regardless of the size of project, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. We'll definitely take that into account as we process more projects.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Not to address the council member directly, but I know I was one that asked for more detail on this because of the, that it's so different than what we usually do. Like, I'm used to seeing redoing a shopping center, they tend to be in this range. Multifamily housing, we tend to look at pilots of this. But this was such a different project that I didn't have any baseline. All I had were a few comparable projects that the developer had brought, and I was like, I want to see our own analysis, I want more information about whether this is reasonable. And so I think comments like that kind of triggered some of this. As far as seeing this on more projects, does it add significant cost and time to add this kind of analysis?
Not time, cost, yes.
How much does it cost to do something like this?
$19,000.
Okay. So I'm not sure where I come down on that, because they are asking for incentives and it is taxpayer money. But I think it's definitely like weighing, how big of a project is it and how kind of out of the norm of what we do is it? Like, if we are very used to seeing these and feel pretty comfortable with the numbers versus being something really different?
That's essentially the analysis that we apply when we're thinking about whether we should have our financial advisor involved or not. It's the scale of the project, the size of investment, your feedback at the conceptual, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
So to me, I feel like maybe you've been striking that balance okay, but I appreciate, especially when we do ask more questions, that you're able to come back with something like this. Because I, I'm still kind of weighing all the information from this hearing, but I feel a lot more comfortable after seeing what our financial advisors have prepared, having someone who's independent but working on our behalf, on our citizens' behalf, to provide that analysis. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I've got a... Correct. Well, I mean, you can ask questions, but yes. I have a big favor, Mr. Bushak. I need you to pull up the conceptual presentation they did. So that would be March...
I'm probably going to need help to do that.
March 18th is correct.
I'm not sure if I can do that on the fly from...
Mr. Elam, would you?
We'll do our best.
And then I need you to pull up the developer presentation. Oh, no, I don't want to watch this, that's for sure. There we go. It's interesting. There's like 10 different ways to do this, and you're doing it way different than I would, but that's good. I'm learning. Yep. Yep. And then it's a conceptual, so it's a little further down. Oh, no, it's a, was that a public hearing? No, I thought it was conceptual. I have it right here. Let me look.
We had multiple presentations that evening.
Okay.
All right. The developer slides?
Yep. 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 Thank you.
If I recall, this is a big file, so it might take a few seconds.
It is a big file, but, you know. It's important. I want slide 17. So like, I think, I feel like the presentation is different tonight, so I'm not, I don't know if I'm even supposed to do this, but I'm pulling up your other presentation, because I know that this hasn't really changed. Because this is what we're looking for. As council members, when you have an ask like this, we're looking for this value proposition that you guys put, you guys put the slide together, the developer did. So these are the benefits, and I feel like we've just skipped right past that and started talking incentives and numbers, and then we got really into the weeds with the cap rates and such. So Ms. Orr, please, present. I mean, I'm, this is a softball, so you don't have to read stuff off the paper, it's right here on the screen, just do your thing.
I just want to make sure I don't miss any points. Yeah, so what we talked about was the value proposition to the city. There are multiple indications of interest from various sports clubs that have indicated that they are ready to sign off and make this their home. So the future home of 2,000 athletes that are currently training and playing outside of the city is one of the first value propositions to the city. The ability to host and co-host regional and national tournaments in conjunction with some of the other facilities that are already existing or that are going to be developed in the city, this adds the ability for those larger national and regional tournaments to be hosted here. It will significantly increase the economic activity in the city. We showed those 20-year projections that were provided by the Sports Facilities Advisory about that increase in the economic activity and the ripple effect that it will have throughout the city at large. There will be unquantifiable health benefits and social impacts for the city and its residents. At the conceptual, we talked about, everybody who is, has children, who lives in Lee Summit, they are currently, you know, traveling to Kansas for their kids' tournaments and games, and they're spending money there. In fact, that's how this project came about. Justin and Scott were in Kansas at their kids' tournaments, and they said, wouldn't it be cool if we had something like this in Lee Summit? And then here we are, two years later. So it brings those families back to Lee Summit, and it has tremendous social and health benefits for Lee Summit residents. Again, the View High Corridor, so this is a target area for development, and it also, as we've talked about during the CID public hearing, brings infrastructure and encourages development along the View High Corridor, both on the pad-ready sites that will be improved by the CID improvements, as well as in the surrounding area, who, for businesses that want to be in close proximity to a project like this with families that are flowing through. Again, on the jobs, the GC has projected there would be about 200 temporary construction jobs created, 168 permanent new jobs, and 28 of those will exceed the county average wage by between 107 and 359%. The reason, again, for the wide range is because there's medical practitioners and doctors that'll be in the physical therapy space, that's part of the project. And the other 168 permanent new jobs are, you know, coaching, staff, referees, things of that nature. So that, in our view, is sort of the value proposition to the city. And then there's the slide we were looking at earlier that shows those numbers a little bit more visibly. So $270.8 million of citywide increased revenues. And this data, again, this is actually an important fact that we talked about during conceptual, but this data only includes people that are traveling more than 90 minutes from the city of Lee Summit to attend events here. So if they're traveling for more than 90 minutes, these numbers do not include that, so it doesn't include spending from anybody that's traveling from Liberty, KC, anywhere that's like in our metro. It does not include spending by those people, and as we know, you have all traveled to Kansas for your kids' events and grandkids, and you likely know how much money you spend when you go to those events and tournaments. I think that...
All right. That's good. I appreciate it. That's what I wanted to see. Can you go back to that slide, though, and leave it there? Okay. So I'm going to go to the next portion of this, which is, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward.
Good evening, council. Mayor Steve Shelton from the school district. Good to see you again. This is a wonderful project. Dr. Buck and I appreciated having an opportunity to meet with the developer and the developer's team. You know, and you mentioned mayor, supporter, opposition. This is a wonderful project. My job tonight is just to do something I've done in the past, just to remind the council about our school board policy, which doesn't govern what you do, it's just making the request. The request is to limit all pilots or in a sense, incentives to 50%. 50% pilots for the school district, and then 50% incentive for the developer. Now, I will just also remind you, we're sensitive about our revenues, because we educate students. To educate students, we need staff. 85% of our operating budget is about supplying staff, salaries and benefits. About 65% of our revenues come from local revenues, property taxes. And so this is important to us, and this is a great project, and we don't deny that. But we are requesting to limit incentives to 50%, to limit and request 50% pilots on projects like this. Also, recently, you may have noticed, there's a lot of talk about property taxes and how there are some discussions around the state about limiting growth in property taxes or growth, limiting the liability for our taxpayers. So it is a topic, it is a topic that I think is pertinent to this body, but also at the state level. And so, once again, just a reminder, the request, the request from the school district, the request from the board, is to limit this to 50%.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Because you got kind of pointed out tonight, your costs, your net on your number of students and such, I don't really want to get into those numbers, but I just want to ask you, have your costs gone up the last five years?
Definitely.
And you want to give a couple of examples?
So staffing is an example. You know, we're adding staff to help support students, even though enrollment doesn't go up, is not significantly grown. It's flat, and it's projected to be flat. I will tell you, with the development of PRI, is that land, those thousands of acres are beginning to be developed. You know, our demographer, which was mentioned tonight, our demographer is projecting that we are going to need to add five elementaries in the southwest corner of our school district. We're going to have to add a high school and middle...
Well, I believe all that, but I just want to talk about your costs. I mean, I know that.
Yes.
I know, I've seen your presentations, but I just really want simple answers such as, have your costs gone up, such as wages?
Yes, sir.
Construction costs?
Yes, sir.
Just the dollar per child that you're spending? Because you guys usually have a calculation, whether it's $15,000 per student or whatever, I'm not really crazy about the formula, but I do respect it. Has it gone up?
Yes, sir.
Per student? Okay. So we do want to, I just want you to have a fair shot at, you know, responding to that, so. But also, at the same time, will a lot of your students utilize this facility?
I would think most definitely, yes.
All right. Well, it's tough, because we do want to support you, so I appreciate you.
Well, and to that point, and that's the reason we want to be mindful of our role in this. And so that's the reason we say yes. 50% incentive makes total sense, with the 50% pilot coming to the district.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Going to go back to questions from council? We haven't closed it yet.
I have questions.
Yes, councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to save this for the second one, but it seems like we're doing everything now, and we're just going to breeze through that second one. So David, since we talked about the recommendations from our financial advisors, I would just also like to throw out there for the agreements, which I know aren't made yet, but maybe you have kind of scribbled them out. Is there any kind of a maintenance agreement for this, aside from just normal property maintenance? I say that because, you know, with 100% tax abatement for 25 years on the property, in 25 years, what's this property going to look like? And is it still going to be in good shape? Or if in 10 years, they decide to sell to somebody else, is it still going to be in good shape? Or, you know, if we get halfway through, worst-case scenario, and it doesn't make it, and now it's sitting in our lap to do what with? We don't know. Is it in good shape? That's my concern with this long of an abatement period.
Yeah, that's a fair question, and I think of the different recommendations that we discussed, Columbia Capital's recommendation, number five, performance requirements, I think that that recommendation would address the issue. And this is, it's a challenging topic, because once you, once the facility is constructed, then we enforce our normal code requirements, such as the property maintenance code, and if they violate the property maintenance code, there would be a case opened, but that, you know, those are the standards that the city would apply. However, with the performance requirements, we could incorporate enhanced requirements, like what you're speaking of. There's generally a covenant to keep it in good condition, to make sure it doesn't get blighted, follow the, our code enforcement rules, follow our city code. But if you'd like to see other things to address those issues, we can include those in the contracts.
Well, I would just, I mean, I think that's a conversation for a different time, but I would just like to make sure that after this abatement period of almost 30 years, that it still looks good, and God forbid that anything happened and it doesn't make it, but that it does, it is able to go back on the market in whatever form that it's in at that point, right? So, you know, this is taxpayer-funded. So if it's taxpayer-funded, I feel like anybody who drives by it needs to look at it and like it. And I'm not saying for aesthetics, right? It could be an ugly building to some people, but it shouldn't have peeling paint or overgrown grass or, you know, any of those things. It should have good curb appeal and should look nice. That's just my opinion on that matter. And then the sales tax rebate part here, have we ever done that before? And if so, could you tell me when?
Yes. We have a sales tax reimbursement agreement with Hy-Vee East, we had one. There was a sales tax reimbursement agreement for...
QuickTrip.
QuickTrip on 291 North. Oh, yeah, Mulberry, 291 North. And Wal, yeah, and Walmart for some improvements they did. So that's three sales tax sharing agreements off the top of our heads collectively that we can conjure up.
Okay. I don't think I saw any of those projects, but that's fine. I just didn't remember ever doing one. I think, okay, I think I've covered everything I have jotted down here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. I respect the school district's position, but if we go with the recommendation, that shuts it down completely, correct? Okay. Thank you.
I got you. Okay. Thank you. All right. Does the applicant care to make any further comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments with respect to Dr. Shelton's request of council, and it also goes to what councilmember Pryor was asking, that if we reduce the abatement on this project, the project will not result in a market level of return that will intract of investment. And that's what, that's what the struggle is, right? So we have to show that there's an investment there that will induce people to want to invest in a project like this, rather than just out of the goodness of their hearts. And so that's the first point. If you go with the recommendation based off of, we certainly understand the school district's position and understand that they require... and, and understand that they require revenues to operate, that, that is, and, you know, the care and education of our children is a top priority for, for everybody and all the residents of Lee Summit. The second point I wanted to make is, kind of goes along with Dr. Shel, what Dr. Shelton was saying. The unpredictability of the assessor's office in Jackson County is a tremendous risk to this project. And if we are subject to those, I'm in Jackson County, my house went up by 48% between 2023 and 25, 21 and 23. So that's a wild fluctuation, the operating costs of a facility like this. Again, this is, it's not a profit center, right? It's, it's, it's a community culture project. The other point to make is that, what we've kind of said is that before 2016, this was agricultural property. There's never been any expectation of revenues from it, and that the church has marketed it and tried to attract other investment, retail and apartments, and has been unable to do so, which is, which is how the developer ended up getting the, the project in this instance. And I, I think part of the site challenges and the issues we discussed during the CID had something to do with that. But I just wanted to provide those comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I am going to now close the public hearing and open the, reopen the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Mayor Tim Lopez.
Just a question, Mayor, for now, as far as procedures. Can you remind us again, are we taking one at a time?
Oh, right now, we are, thank you. We are talking about the CID only, correct, Mr. Bushak? So this would be the 2.75% and the 1%?
That's correct. You just finished the CID hearing, and you can have whatever deliberation you'd like now in discussion. And we, we will need to open and enter into the record the evidence for the second public hearing.
Yeah, the second public hearing, well, you can discuss both.
Whatever.
You can discuss both, but we're going to end up voting on the CID first, and then we'll do another public hearing. We'll vote on the chapter 100. But as far as your overall comments, this is the appropriate time.
Okay, if I have the floor, I'll go ahead and continue. Just kind of getting, cutting straight to the chase, I guess. You know, from the conceptual presentation to tonight, I appreciate that the developer listened. The investors, you all listened and came back with the more refined, more detailed, especially the performa and the financial analysis. So thank you guys for that. And then as far as the, the city's financial advisor analysis, I think that adds a lot of value to, to our decision and our process. It caused a little confusion, as you alluded to, but at the end of the day, I think it's information that's vital for us to make a decision. So, so I think mission accomplished with that. That being said, I think this project itself, I think we all know, is very different than anything I've, I've sat up here on the dais to evaluate and consider, and anything that involves an incentive type package, it's very unique, extremely unique. That being said, I think the value proposition to the city definitely is something for us to consider. I think this is a catalyst type project. I'll use fancy words or catchy words like game changer type, type of a description. The econo, though, though we're, we're potentially, you know, there's some risks, there's always risk, and setting precedents, I guess. Though, though these are extreme, this is an extreme case, I think, being that it is a catalyst type project, the multiplier, economic multiplier opportunity, I think is endless. And that was this, this conversation that we, we had, the conversation initially, even back to the conceptual presentation, I think we clearly identified that this could just completely change that corridor on View High. There are some existing sports related, recreational related activities and facilities along that corridor, but this is game changer. And I think for us to consider something this, this large and robust, I think could put us in a whole different category as a community. I know we have some other public, similar recreational facilities that, that are kind of in design right now and in process. But I know that this corridor has needed something like this and can attract people from other parts of the metro area and, and obviously from other parts of the country for pretty unique and special sporting events and tournaments. So with that being said, I guess everybody kind of knows where I'm heading with this, but I, I definitely will support this. I know that it's, it's, it's something that's unique, like I said, and probably something we've never really considered in the city. It's, you know, there's always risk, but I think the potential benefit and the multiplier effect and the value to our city, the value proposition, I think is something that I'm willing to take a chance on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, as a, as a body, as we sit here, from, you know, three years ago when I first got appointed and we, we looked at like Discovery Park and, and some other developments, I think one thing we've always tried to do is, is get better, improve our processes, improve our systems, think about how we look at development, how we look at incentives. And so like tonight, I hope it doesn't appear as unfair to this developer that we may be going through some things that we haven't in the past. It is a unique project in the sense that, you know, we've never had a complex quite like this. We're in an area that we probably never even imagined would be this type of development, so it's unique in that setting. Whereas maybe some of the other retail sites were initially commercial and retail, and we kind of had a, a good handle on that. So I, I do think it's, it's important that we go through this process. I appreciate the third party analysis. I think it, it bared out some good, some good questions and some good feedback. I think, you know, based on what's been presented, I would be in support of, of how it's laid out. I do believe that some of these recommendations could be important, and I say that because we've also seen what happens. This is a, this is a new development, and even with your development experience, this is something far outside of what you've done in the past. And that's not to say you can't do it, because I always say aim high and go for bigger things, and I think you're fully capable of doing it. I think as a city, especially when, when we get into 100% property tax abatement, it does require just a level of scrutiny that, that we just, we need to go through. I'm not concerned with the percentage of debt and leverage. I think it's important to know that you have the financial capability to do it, whatever that looks like, so nothing too burdensome there. I am interested in, I'm not interested in capping your return, because you're taking a great risk. And if this thing outperforms any of your projections, good for you. That's an entrepreneur spirit, and, and thank you for bringing it. I do think it's important that we, that we do look at the total development cost. Not necessarily from a perspective of can you build it for less than what's being presented here? But more so, will it deliver what we see in those pictures, right? So like, it looks beautiful. I, I think it, I think it looks like a beautiful site, project, inside, outside, the amenities. So I think it's important that we're getting those features and those benefits with this development. I don't want to say the word clawback, but what would change if you fully designed it with construction drawings and it came back at 35 million? I don't know. Mr. Bushak, that might be for the body to decide on what to do there. But I'm more, I'm more concerned with just that it, you know, delivers the, the product that we're seeing there in those pictures and that, that it's maintained there. And then I think that's, gosh, there was something else. I just drew a blank. I think that's about it. So I, I would be in support of this, just with those, maybe those considerations. Nothing too cumbersome, but something that at least protects our interests and, and their interests and makes it a win-win for everybody. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So I've only said this about one other project, with asking for incentives, but I, this is another project that I feel where the community benefit does outweigh the possible risks to this city. So, you know, I, I mean, it's hard to, when you think about local investors, I feel like we don't have a lot of, a ton of that coming, you know, to us up here on the dais. And so when you see people who are living in your community wanting to invest, especially this size of a project, I feel like that's a, that's a win. It's, and, and so I feel like that, you know, when you've got somebody who you know is not, hopefully gonna, you know, I think, again, multifamily, but you, they sell off and this, this is something where it's like, okay, they live in the neighborhood. They live, they want to drive by and know that their neighbors feel, you know, pride in what they've done to help the community as a benefit. And so I feel like there's just, there's another layer to that, and I feel like that's pretty respectable, in my opinion. And so, you know, I also think the economic benefit that I feel like it will bring, you know, I think about, you know, there's places, and we have so many more unique restaurants, whether you're sitting down or you're going there for a quick bite. We have some, I mean, they're amazing what we have now to offer. New things, not more of the same, but a lot of new things. And I think that that's gonna help this too, because we have options. When people are stopping for a tournament, they can go eat, they have a ton of options. That matters. So I feel like it's gonna keep people in our city, and, you know, I think we, we would be out at Garmin for a soccer tournament, and I found Betty Ray's. Like, good grief, that, it's amazing. And so, but I, I will take my kids there because I found Betty Ray's there, because, and we love it. So I'm just thinking, people will find things here that they love and want to come back to, even when you don't have a game there. And I think that that's important to remember, that it's not just gonna benefit them, but it's gonna benefit other businesses in our community. And we may not always see it, but I know it's going to happen. So, and I agree with councilmember Lovell too about the no cap on returns as well. So I will be in support of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna repeat everything my colleagues have said, but I, I appreciate the local guys putting forth the effort and the entrepreneurship of what they're doing to make this thing happen. Councilmember Hodges and I communicate on a regular basis in our district, and I know she is like the rest of my neighborhood, and they leave every Saturday and Sunday, and I don't see them again until the evening. Because of their drive, their commute, they can't run home, they can't run back. This being local is, is great. We're asking a lot of our taxpayers. I, I think it's worthy of this type of a project, and I do think we need to look at the recommendations of what was presented to us tonight. But with that said, and not repeating a lot of the other things that have been previously said, I would be in support of this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do appreciate the additional data that we got tonight, especially on the financial side about the size of the incentive compared to similar projects, compared to the rate of return that we're looking at. So that helps me a lot with the comfort. I think, as I kind of said before, I would look at this in terms of the benefit to the city being tourism, bringing in new visitors, either from the metro or from outside the metro, and providing more services to our residents who are constantly traveling for soccer games. So I think it's, I think it is a benefit to the city. It is a large incentive package, but I would be okay moving forward with it. I do think we should have a, starting our negotiation based on those recommendations that the financial team put forth. I, I agree that I don't need to have an exact debt to equity ratio, as long as you see that they have the financial wherewithal to, to put the project together. But I think the other requirements in terms of making sure that they build what they say they're gonna build in a timely manner. We definitely don't want to have this drag out for everyone. I see it be a benefit to the community in a shorter timeframe, so. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Sorry, I remembered my, my last point when I went blank, and I think councilmember Shields just hit on it, but was with the construction is, you know, a distinct kind of timeline of, of what would be completed. So that we just have an understanding that, like, you know, when the structure is built, if it's just soccer fields and some of the other things aren't done, but like, we have a general understanding of when that shift occupancy comes, what's done inside? And then how that, maybe that soccer field, just maybe a, a kind of a distinct timeline of how the project will be delivered. And maybe key points there. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and then I'll just make a few comments as well. The, I think the, all the value proposition on the, the screen, the ones that really jumped out, I mean, they're all really wonderful value propositions as far as, to the city. But the fact that we're bringing youth sports to our city to serve our kids, but also other kids, and we can keep our kids and parents at home, we can bring the day trips, we can unlock that corridor at View High. I mean, these are all big bonuses for our city. We've been trying to unlock that corridor for quite some time. It's a cherished part of the community, the, the Longview area. When it comes to the, the jobs as well at the bottom of that screen, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of positives that we use to talk about return on investment. And we started this night off talking about return on investment for the developer, and we never got to talk to about, about the return on investment for us. We have to have a reason to balance this out. We can ask the financial specialists all these questions all night long, but we, there is a way to quantify this, and they're even, they even quantified it on the next sheet where they talk about 20, I'm sorry, 270 million over 20 years with regard to citywide tax revenues. And that's on people, just on people that are traveling 90 minutes to our city. So a lot of bonuses to try to offset the fact that we are going to be a partner in this, because we're gonna be incentivizing this if we, if we approve it, to the tune of, what's the total? To, to the tune of 20, almost 20 million, 19 and a half million dollars. So, so that's a big, that's a big incentive, but it's, it's, we're in this as a partnership. And I look at, I know that some people don't really like this analogy, but when I look at the fieldhouse that we're building in Oldham Village, the parks are building it, they're part, they're gonna bring tournaments here, they're gonna bring kids here, they're gonna bring day trips here. They're gonna be serving our kids and our citizens in our community. I mean, it's just, it's very similar to that. We're investing there with taxpayer dollars, and we're investing here with the, the redistribution of tax dollars back to the developer for public components. So I'm in support as well. I just want to, do you want to say that the school district is our friend, and we're trying to support them? We need to have conversations with them later about these incentive policies. There are times that we're gonna do variances outside of what we typically do, and this is what we're saying we're going to do in this situation. But we also don't want them to continually feel like we're not acting in consideration of the best interests of the school district. And we don't like it when anybody talks bad about our school district in any way, or, or, I, I just, I don't know. That's just not the, the route I wanted to go tonight. But I am in support of this as far as moving forward, so we're gonna call this to a vote in a second, and then we're gonna open the other public hearing, we're gonna bust through it. If anybody's got a question, they can, then we'll vote on the chapter 100, and then we'll take a break. All right. Yep, we'll do public comments and then we'll take, take a break. So, councilmember Carlisle, this would be the, the CID. Would you please read bill number 25-105?
Thank you, Mayor. I move bill number 25-105 and ordinance approving the petition for establishment of the View High Sports Community Improvement District be second read.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-105 by councilmember Carlisle, seconded by councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes, I have one thing. I didn't get to put this on the record, Mr. Bushak. I am not for traditional, old-school clawbacks. If you can be innovative, yes, I want them to be able to have financing. Yes, I'm, I know that most people up here would like you to have all of those conditions in place, those recommendations, but I will tell you, I don't want clawbacks the type that we have to sue somebody and then we're tied up in a court of law for the next seven to 10 years trying to, to enforce a clawback. If you can do it so that it's clean and such, that's fine. Otherwise, I, I just want you to work your magic, get the best possible terms, and, you know, and make sure that they can get their financing, and let's, you know, if they're a partner, let's move forward. So that's just my opinion. I know that there's some up here that want every single condition, so you'll have to, yeah, you'll have to figure that out. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes written. Please record the vote. It is unanimous. This goes to second reading. We're gonna open up another public hearing and talk about, we're gonna enter the, into the, into the record in a moment, so you'll see how this works. So I'm going to close the regular session, open the public hearing in the matter of chapter one, uh, chapter 100 for the View High Sports Complex Project, 3D Builders, KC LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to, to speak on this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk?
Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so it'll be fine.
I do.
No, we're going to open the, the, we're, uh, go ahead, I'll, I'll show you.
Incorporate by reference.
Yep. Mr. Bushak, um, do you have anything to enter in the record?
Yes, so there's two things I'd like to do. First, enter into the record exhibits one through nine that are in your meeting packet.
Please enter into record, into the record exhibits one through nine.
And then, second, I would like to incorporate the evidence and testimony from the previous public hearing into this public hearing.
Include, uh, enter into the record, the, all of the testimony and discussion in the previous public hearing.
And I have no additional comments unless you have questions or other discussion.
Okay, let me see if the applicant would like to make any comment? No. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. I'm just going to give you a nod, because I know that you would come forward if you thought it would make a difference. Any more discussion by council? Any questions? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25-106?
I advance to second reading bill number 25-106, an ordinance approving a plan for a chapter 100 project for the View High Sports and Entertainment Project.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-106 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The bill does go to second reading, nine zero. It'll be second read probably at the next meeting, I believe, Mr. Bushak, is that correct? Okay. And with that, I would say thank you all for investing in Lee Summit and for sticking to it. I know this is a lot of work. All right, I need to get myself organized for public comments. We have a few people here tonight that have been waiting patiently.
And Mayor, Mr. Olus had to leave.
Oh.
So there's only two.
Mr. Olus had to leave. Let's go with Ms., Mr. Carroll, Mike Carroll. He's, I know he's been here since beginning.
Put that first, and then you put them in upside, upside down.
It's really zoomed out. We need to zoom out.
Is this right here?
Oh, nice. We just need this top portion.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I came, I'm Mike Carroll. I live on Douglas Street, and I'd like to speak to you about the Douglas Street project that is ongoing right now. The, the main issues that many of us that live on Douglas Street, the main issue is the proposed 10-foot shared-use pathway that's going to be put on the east side of the street, and the loss of so many mature trees and property. Many residents moved to their current homes because of the big mature trees along the street. The plan is to replace, remove trees, but the overall feeling and ambiance of the neighborhood will be radically changed, and in many residents' opinion, for the worse. Now I'm going to read some of the comments from local residents that have been posted on social media that I have seen over the past couple of weeks.
As long as they're appropriate, sir.
Yeah, they're, they're appropriate. Gary from Pryor Meadows says, "I don't live on Douglas, but drive it often. I hope they aren't going to tear down any of the trees. It is a beautiful drive in the autumn. If only the people who are making these decisions could realize they are taking away the charm of the old downtown area. Everything doesn't have to be new and perfect. There is beauty in imperfection." Doris from Princeton Heights says, "I hate to see nature torn out as if it's worth nothing. One day, when it's just about nothing but hard concrete, people will regret their concrete friends." Carol, a local Douglas Street resident, says, "The one-mile stretch of northeast Douglas from Chipman to Second will have almost 50 large mature trees torn out. Seventy-five percent of those are on the east side. Some of us feel that the new curbs and sewers could be achieved in a way which is less destructive of this important natural and built environment by involving urban foresters and other cities who have a longer history of environmental stewardship. For example, we have a 40-year-old oak tree in our parkway whose roots our tree company could treat to help withstand construction impacts, and the tree would have a good chance of surviving, especially if the sidewalk can be adapted or modified." So now back to my own comments. It looks like the Douglas Street project is supposed to be part of this greenway trail system, and that's, that's really what's causing this big problem, this big 10-foot sidewalk. The Douglas Street is a two-lane road. It's not four-lane like Chipman and Tudor, and there's just not enough room for the full 10-foot path to take up so much property and thus so many of the trees. I have a picture I can show you. Okay, this tree, that's right along Douglas, in front of, probably just about across the street for where I, where I live, and it's, that's slated to be taken out. Great big oak tree. And you can see the sidewalk, and there's going to be a 10-foot path put in there, and it's going to take that tree. So there are many other trees just like that. And so we, uh, we've talked to many residents along this whole Douglas Street stretch, and we've got a petition that I've got here on, also on the dais, there on the, you can see, and we've got a quarter of the people that have signed it to ask you to stop the design, stop the project, take another look, take out this 10-foot sidewalk, make it less. And so we plan to be back at next week's city council meeting to see if we've made any progress, made an impression on you all. And we plan to present the actual petition next week with all the signatures, and we plan to get many more. We feel that the changes could be made in this plan, even at this late date, that both parties can accept. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we have another person that would like to speak, Ms. Hedencamp?
Yeah, I'm Steph, Steph Hedencamp. I'm downtown resident for a long, long time. That's my dad, so I'm here to support my mom. And frankly, the property owners along this corridor, you know, I've been a little grumpy back there because it took so long to get through that CID stuff, but, you know, it was interesting to listen to it, and I do appreciate that you all have real responsibilities, macro and micro, to all of us in Lee Summit. So I appreciate the, the time that you're putting to all of this and allowing these public comments. I think I just want to quote you all some of the things you've said to the developer that kind of are relevant. Beto Lopez, you, you said you were happy the developer listened.
If you could do the quotes but not address people.
Oh, I'm so sorry. One of the council mentioned listening. They were thrilled that the developer had listened to the city, and that's what we're asking here, that the Public Works Department and the council listen to what the citizens have said. We know that there were public engagement meetings. We know that these comments were shared. We're just not real sure that they got integrated into the design. So we need, we need that to, to be heard and to show, reflect into the design. Another council person talked about fairness. We do feel like this is a fairness issue. In one instance, a property owner will entirely lose their driveway. That seems excessive. A 10-foot sidewalk feels excessive because it's not even up against the road. There's an additional green space right of way. We know on the new Third Street improvement, that, that corridor, that 10-foot shared-use path is right up against the road. So that's a possibility, right? We could put it up against the road and not have an additional part of, of land that's lost. We heard about balance, and so we do need to balance the codes that are on the books with what the property owners are requesting, and what can accommodate people walking to the new farmer's market, getting to the downtown. We understand all that. I think the best thing that was said was just at the very end, variances outside of what we normally do. That's what we're asking for here. This is not in stone and doesn't need to be. This is a group of people who are not living along Chipman with four lanes and a median. We cannot have a 10-foot sidewalk. So please ask Public Works to pause the project, look at the design again, and let's fix this for our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Would you, if you see Mr. Olus, tell him that we're sorry that it was taken so long to get to this point, so he missed out on speaking, but maybe he'll be here next week. And I'm sure staff will be talking to us about all of this, so thank you for coming. I know they're going to talk to us about the flooding on Doug, in that area, so it should be quite an interesting discussion when it comes to the curbs and gutters and I'm going to take a break. These guys are retired, I think, and I need to talk to staff about the rest of the agenda and then make a proposal to council. So, uh, we're going to take a recess. We need at least 10 minutes. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports, or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and, as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities, as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports, and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to, to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5 o'clock, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls, and this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great, a reason to know why we, we go to the grocery store, when you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store, and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift, as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours, the opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station, and the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here, or numerous other people working at this station, that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better, and that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as, as many places as possible, so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the, the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters, so in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we came and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls, when we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire. We can come back and, and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that, again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to run a call throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine, and what this does is gives us the capability when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear, again, kind of getting back to that cancer, cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts, as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day, and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city, therefore, we want it to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up, and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3, and that's a fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on, on shift every day, and they, they split the city, and this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief at Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city, and they, they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net, or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
Hello and welcome to Meet Me at the Market, your development update on Green Street. Green Street Market is enclosed in exterior work, including roofing, glazing, tinting, and brick facade will be added soon. Wooden panels are up where glass doors will be, and workers are constructing utilities inside. When completed, a catering kitchen and concession area will be on the southwest side of the building, and bathrooms will be on both ends. Construction of the outdoor canopy adjacent to Green Street Market is ongoing. The steel beams and crossposts will support a translucent polymer roof covering the Green Street lawn, offering year-round programmed activities, events, and performances. Concrete has been poured in front of City Hall, and pavements, hardscapes, and landscaping will soon begin for Green Street growth. The Streetscape Pavilion will serve as the gateway to Green Street with an art walk featuring art from acclaimed artists, an immersive kids playground, outdoor seating, and gathering spaces. More public art is coming. Four local artists have been selected for the City Hall public parking garage, and three finalists have been chosen for the digital mural for Green Street Market. Be on the lookout for an announcement very soon. Third Street from Douglas to Green intersection is expected to open on January 30th, followed by Green Street to the Johnson Street intersection in March. That's it for this episode of Meet Me at the Market. For more information on the project, visit citofls.net/greenestreet.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just the dollars.
It's more than just the dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982, then route. Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call showed some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story and getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person and they responded immediately and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
From you guys, what is council's vision? What is some of the direction? What are the things you want to see us come back with in relation to, you know, special event permitting and, you know, short-term rental? We've had that conversation or those conversations have been out in the public. So really highlight, high level, you know, World Cup is 48 teams coming to play 104 matches over 39 days in June of 2026. So we will keep going. Tomorrow is the big kickoff for the one year till World Cup hits us. And really, again, our objectives, you know, just review some background information quickly, kind of the city's planning structure, and then what we are considering to date, and then, you know, receive your feedback and direction. High level, there are six matches that will be played in Kansas City at GEHA Field at Arrowhead. The big event, you know, there's group stage matches, then they go down to the round of 32, and then, you know, which we have a game of, and then the quarterfinal is kind of the highlight.
Can you pause there?
Yes, for us. Whoops. Wow, how did I hit so many at once? There you go.
So basically, it's all six games within 30 days. And when do you think the people will be coming?
So, you know, the first match in of World Cup is on June 11th. And so we'll be coming off of downtown days. And so I think those teams will be traveling in around that time if we have base camps here in the Kansas City metro area.
Right.
Yep. So it'll be kind of coming off downtown days and getting prepared for especially those teams that will travel in for the first match here on the 16th, probably about a week ahead or a few days ahead so they can acclimate and practice.
All right. Thank you.
This is just the high-level overview. You know, World Cup is put on by FIFA. FWC 26 is the organization that is running World Cup 26 and the three countries that are involved. And then, you know, there's KC 2026, which we're plugged into. And then this, you know, obviously, we're concerned about City Lee Summit and our community partners and getting that feedback. And of course, we've talked about tourism earlier. So the Visitors Bureau and then that LS Gold 26 group that has stood up to try to leverage activities within that World Cup timeframe. So FIFA, sorry, KC 2026 has organized in five areas around the 18 areas of focus, mainly around planning and safety and transportation, health and medical, cyber security, and all of that coordination. And then Visit KC is working with Visitors bureaus and kind of that arm of the project. The travel profile, which I think is relevant, is, you know, typically 63% of the travelers coming in for World Cup games are male, kind of that age demographic, that 30 to 49-year age range is the highest age demographic. You know, we expect that there will be 54% international visitors. Most of them stay just under 10 days in the U.S. A little less than half speak English. And so really, there's a big attendance at Fan Festival, and they try to attend multiple matches. So again, just a reminder, you know, in the Kansas City metro area, we are eligible for three base camps in Kansas City, Kansas, Riverside, Lawrence. And so really looking at if we have base camps in play, then, you know, we expect high travelers, a high amount of travelers to come into the area mainly at, you know, around those base camps, mainly between Fan Fest and GEHA Field at Arrowhead. But, you know, we could, you know, because of our situation, the way we are situated in the metro, you know, we have our airport train travel and opportunities with hotels coming onboard to capture some of that. And really looking for, you know, other travelers that may be more regional travelers from, you know, neighboring states coming over. The big important thing to note on this slide, I think that things will change in the planning world. I know it's been slow to get information coming out, but really, when they do that team draw for base camps at the end of December and kind of they massage it, so somewhere in the first week or two of January, I think we'll know, one, if we have one or three base camps in the region activated, and what teams will come. And that will really shape, you know, what those traveler profiles, the large, you know, size of travelers that follow these teams, you know, depending on who we, if we have activated base camps, who may be coming to the region. Fan Festival is at, kind of on that south side of Liberty Memorial. I think the important thing to say about this is looking at the estimated, you know, the days that they're going to be open, but really those peak attendance days around big matches, especially the matches played here. You know, they're expecting 75,000 to come through Fan Fest over that entire day or those peak days that it's open. So I think it's really putting numbers into perspective when you hear, you hear big numbers like 600,000 people coming to the region, you know, is that all at once? Is that overtime? And remembering that it's a 39-day event in totality. And so just, you know, kind of a little bit of perspective on estimate estimation of numbers and the impact over time. Important dates for us, you know, those group stage events or matches, the round of 32 and quarterfinal, but then recognizing that we have some community events that will be happening. Again, downtown days is scheduled for June 5th through 7th. Legacy Blast will be on July 2nd. And so really that kind of overlap between the end of downtown days and when travelers may be coming into the area, overall region. And then recognizing that July 4th is the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So, you know, I would expect that there'd be some big national events going on as well around that July 4th and around that, you know, kind of before and after that quarterfinal, but really that round of 32 where it's on July 3rd. So city organization, we've organized in five different areas. Safety and security, which Chief Forbes is kind of the point person on. Transportation, Michael Park is the point person for transportation. Ryan Elam is handling infrastructure, and you look under that, you see housing, sustainability, human rights, some of those things that while are more FIFA priorities or KC 2026 priorities, you know, as we plan events, we want to be cognizant of that. Public information, communications, we have our departmental PIOs, but we, and then creative services. So how do we message information if we make any changes to ordinances or if we do any wayfinding or other translation, that type of thing? And then, of course, we have kind of the marketing arm with our Visitors Bureau and having, you know, Crystals kind of headed that up until we hired Corey Day as the Executive So facts and assumptions, we know we're plugged into planning in a multitude of ways through KC 2026. So we have people involved in, from the cybersecurity standpoint, from law enforcement, health, EMS, and fire hazmat. So we're plugged in a variety of ways. Transportation, the transportation group that's meeting, you know, Michael Park's part of that. So we, you know, we are just engaged with what's happening. One of the big things we know is we are under consideration for a park-and-ride location. We did submit for that. We don't have an answer on that yet, but, you know, that may make a difference in activity around Lee Summit. And then we have the Community Planning Group, LS Gold 26, that is working towards how do we activate and do some community activities around the World Cup event. We assume we may have more special events in Lee Summit during that timeframe. So what is the impact of that to us as a city and as a community? And then also, those larger regional events may trigger some resource requests from Lee Summit. So thinking of, you know, if they need support for EMS or fire or law enforcement activities at some of these larger events that are going on around the region. And how do we protect our residents and continue to provide our level of service? And then, you know, see if we have the opportunity to reciprocate some of that assistance. So the considerations we have for you tonight is really getting an idea of what your vision is for Lee Summit during World Cup. You know, do you want big bangs? Do you want smaller activations? You know, do you want changes to ordinances, all of those different things? And then, you know, thinking about how do we engage and support the community to create that shared vision? And then, you know, what are the desired outcomes that council would like to see? So here are the ways, like I said, we're engaged across the bigger picture of, you know, through Mark, Mid-America Regional County Committees and Regional, Mid-America Regional Council Committees, and then Cape Information Officers, Emergency Management, all of those areas. If I'm going too fast, stop me. But really, this one just shows kind of that spider web of activity. So on the left side, you see the five committees that KC 2026 is organized into. In the center is the five committees that we, as Lee Summit, are organized into. And then the, on the right, you see the 10 committees that LS Gold 26 is organized into. And, you know, where we are plugged in, in both of those, you know, both of those organizations and throughout the areas. And then really looking at public information and communication, going out to the public, but also, you know, how are we engaging and providing the information about what we're doing about safety and security, transportation, infrastructure, et cetera. So safety and security, obviously, looking at some concerns we may have. Obviously, we have multiple days of EOC operations, you know, we may be engaged in regional EOC operations, you know, is there a radio communication concern across the entire region? You know, are there network cybersecurity concerns, you know, mutual aid requests? Are there fireworks considerations? Because we are working around the Fourth of July timeframe. Typically, we have finite days that, you know, our residents can use fireworks, event fatigue, you know, what are the requests from organizers planning events here in Lee Summit? What are the requests, you know, for mutual aid, all of those things? And again, kind of compared to those regional concerns that safety and security plugs into. And by safety and security, law enforcement, EMS, fire, cybersecurity, all of those things. Transportation, again, this is kind of just the conceptual map. You've probably seen this in other presentations around the community that KC 2026 has done. And really focusing on how do we create those park-and-ride situations where, you know, and get people to Fan Festival or Arrowhead for events at those, at those two locations? And then, again, us being considered as a park-and-ride. We do meet the parameters in our submittal, so just FYI, you know, looking at proximity to I-470, you know, adjacent to existing hotel, access to downtown Lee Summit. So some of the benefits that we see if we were chosen to be a park-and-ride. Other transportation considerations, you know, really looking at that capital project schedule, you know, we want to make sure that we're not doing construction if we were, you know, selected as a park-and-ride around that area or, you know, around our airport, that sort of thing. Recognizing that we still have a commitment to make road improvements and do some of those capital projects. And so without going through every single one of them, really looking at special event coordination, traffic management, if there's going to be Amtrak service enhancements, recognizing that we are, you know, the first stop coming out of Union Station with Amtrak, with the River Runner, that's what it's called, yes. And then, you know, we do have some considerations about what are rideshare service, you know, accommodations? Is there any opportunity that we would want to talk about, you know, those micro-mobility? I know we've regulated that to a point that we don't see a lot of that here in Lee Summit. Bike share, you know, what are other considerations? Is there a finite amount of time that we would look at anything like that? Just for your consideration, not recommending. Our airport, as you know, we've done a lot of work to improve our airport, and we have done some enhancements, you know, buying a bigger tug to be able to move larger jets. We have the Terminal 2 that will be open, at least part of it, Michael Park, will be open in time for World Cup. And so just recognizing, you know, obviously, marketing the Kansas City Lee Summit Regional Airport with our name change and recognizing that, you know, when we saw events at Arrowhead such as playoff games, those sorts of things, we did see a higher amount of travel into our airport. And so just being prepared for that is something that is on our mind. Infrastructure-wise, you know, here's some areas that, you know, we are really looking for some guidance from and feedback from you as the governing body, and that's related around special event permits, fireworks, like I mentioned, are there any waiver modification considerations for business license? You know, how are we going to handle pop-up vendors? And really just looking at short-term rentals as another point of consideration, you know, changes to open that up more. And then on signage, is there a way to streamline that approval process? So don't know that this is all-inclusive list. You guys may have other things on your mind as well. Physical infrastructure as well, you know, looking at outdoor sales and space requirements, solid waste, if we do start having a lot of activations. You know, we do have Green Street coming online, and, you know, how is that going to be programmed throughout this event? Temporary installations, you know, so there's just some other parking enforcement requirements that we may be considering as well. And then, of course, messaging throughout all of this to the public, to those partner groups within the city, you know, so that we know, you know, we have some ambassadors within the city that have some information, they can provide information, so just communications and public information throughout. Marketing, we have the Lee Summit Visitors Bureau. Corey is here, but through brevity, we're looking at, really, the Visitors Bureau's plan is to continually market Lee Summit, right? And provide that coordination and work with, you know, our partners with LS Gold 26, Downtown Lee Summit, Main Street Chamber, EDC, you know, and the city as a whole. So just looking for all of those opportunities to market our community. And wrap up, so, you know, there is some budget consideration to this and resource considerations. So looking at, you know, is there cost enhancements to infrastructure that you deem that we need to be making? You know, how do we, you know, support marketing? You know, how do we support these events if they're events of a significant enough size? You know, there may be overtime involved in that, you know, whether it's street closures or for events or public safety monitoring at those events, having our EOC open, that sort of thing at varying hours. And then again, you know, there's some cost considerations with programming, you know, and cultural arts and Green Street and all of the things that make Lee Summit wonderful and our new amenities that we think will be draws for the community as well, if there's signage or wayfinding concerns as well. Some of the things that we want to consider also is recognizing that it's a 39-day event. We'll be coming off a significant event like downtown days. We'll have Legacy Blast, and obviously, there's, you know, volunteers that are a part of all of that. You know, what does that look like? You know, are they going to want to continue to volunteer for more and more events? Are they going to want to volunteer more at Fan Fest because they want to be part of the excitement? And then really looking at what are our resources, especially citywide, as an organization, and looking at, you know, how do we plan this so that we don't hit resource fatigue? You know, do we consider any limitations of vacation or leave, personal leave requests? And that may be in various departments, you know, not citywide, but it may be in significant departments that are activated for this event. So I gave you a lot of information in a very short amount of time. Hopefully, that helps you catch some time up in the meeting. But really looking at where do we go from here? And so again, looking at what is, you know, city council's vision for Lee Summit during World Cup? How do we engage the community and support the community to create that shared vision? You know, many staff members, the leads in those areas are involved with LS Gold 26 and that community planning group. So that gives us an opportunity to kind of spread that word and share your vision with that group, you know, and what is the desired outcome during this event? So really looking for feedback, recognizing that we want to be welcoming and supportive of this event coming to our region, but also recognizing that we want to continue to provide our high level of city services and keep our community safe during that time as well.
Okay. LS Gold 26, that's the Chamber Group?
Yes.
For the most, I mean, and it's very, can you explain to them that how big that is? There's quite a few people and there's, you got 10 committees, obviously, so there's quite a few people.
Yeah, I think there's somewhere around 150 people engaged in that group. Yeah, and it's split into 10 different communities, or committees, sorry. Oh, gosh, my words are not coming today. So it is, it is a large group. It's got a significant amount of city staff involved, at least, at least one person per committee, I would say, roughly, maybe a couple in different areas. And then...
Have they gone as far as discussing the types of events they might want to have?
That I'm not sure of. I don't know if Corey could, or Mark could answer that. Yeah, they haven't come to us with any requests yet as far as events or, you know, we want to do X.
I can chime in a little bit, Mayor. I've had some time with their co-chairs, and I'd flat-out ask a question with the Green Street opening up, you know, I didn't want to make assumptions, but I said, I'll ask the question and make the assumption that there's a desire to have something occurring over at Green Street. And they said that that would be accurate. But what that is, I don't know that we have those details.
Is there, is there research on what types of events have been successful in other countries and such when this?
I would think I would...
I mean, in other words, food is always a good thing.
Right.
People got to eat.
Yeah.
And they're wanting a different experience.
Right. Well, and I think there has been some, a little bit of guidance about, you know, leaning into, you know, if we have a significant influx of visitors from other countries, then, you know, we want to lean into what makes America great, what makes our community great, those types of activities, you know? So it may be, and it may just be enhancements to an event we already, we're already having, or it may be other events, you know? And depending on what those activations are, you know, they may be a significant drain on resources or not so much, you know? So if we're, you know, recreating a large event over multiple days, like a Oktoberfest Downtown Days-type event, that's going to be a more significant drain on our resources versus, you know, having some watch parties in a more confined, smaller geographic location. So, so I think that's important to understand. And then is it, you know, where are we activating? How many people are activating things? And, you know, what are private groups doing separate from anything that's kind of that in, within that community bound of LS Gold 26? So.
And what happens to the telecommunications when 650,000 people come into the metro? Are we going to have issues?
I think, I think probably, I think that, you know, I know for a fact there have been enhancements made, just from my previous experience at Arrowhead, to, you know, to boost communications when, you know, of course, they bring 80,000 people in for a Chiefs game and everybody's on their cell phone wanting to communicate in some way. You know, there's those opportunities where they bring communication on wheels, so if they call it a cow, or they may have a more updated term for it, but where they can bring portable cell towers, those sorts of things into different areas. So yes, that is all part of what people are looking at in the planning world, so.
I'm going to open it up for discussion. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm glad that we're having this discussion. I think that it's really important that we do some planning for this. I've been on the Chamber LS Gold Group, so I've been in some of those discussions. I think, at least in the committee that I'm involved in, I feel like there's still a lot of just expectant waiting, that waiting to see what teams come here, waiting to see what the FIFA guidelines are. And until we get some of that, it's hard to know exactly how to plan an event because there's all different rules about, you know, what terms you can use and what licensing you have to do and all that kind of stuff. But that said, I don't think that means that we stop thinking these things through. But I, but that's kind of been my impression with that group, is they're still kind of waiting for more information mostly.
Yeah, and I would say in general, you know, that information is trickling out slowly. You know, as KC 2026 receives some of that information, you know, they've been filtering out slowly some information when they get it. But I think, to your point, and that's why I think that slide about, you know, the draw, you know, when the teams draw where their, for their base camps, I think that's when planning or serious planning about what we can do as a community will ramp up a lot. You know, Mid-America Regional Council has a community calendar that KC 2026 has been trying to get communities to drive to as far as, you know, some, some communities have, you know, plugged in dates that they want to have watch parties at, you know, some type of civic center that they have or amenity they have. And of course, all the match days are on there. I think some of the events that 2026, KC 2026 is planning is on that calendar. So I think, you know, just to try to garner that awareness so that we're not all piling on one single day as much as possible, recognizing that there are some, some events, that quarterfinal is a big day, you know? And, and the round of 32 game is right around July 4th. And so, you know, so there is some natural stacking that's going to occur, but yeah. So I think there are opportunities where those events are starting to get a little populated, at least for communities that are kind of maybe either at the same point we are or a little ahead of where we are. So, and, and some other communities have done moratoriums. They've said, we're not going to, you know, permit any more 5Ks or 10Ks or, you know, whatever events they have in their community during that timeframe because they don't want to, you know, spread themselves too thin. So I think that's some, some things that I know other communities have talked about.
That's, that's interesting. I hadn't heard that's a good idea. Overall, kind of, I put this into a couple of different buckets as I think through what I'd like to see and what I'd like to see us at least have a discussion about. So my overall vision for this is tourism to Lee Summit, bring, keeping as many dollars here as we can and making sure we're maintaining a safe environment, and then also providing some fun activities for our residents. Like, that's kind of the big overarching framework in my mind, that I don't think that we need to spend a lot of resources marketing Lee Summit from scratch. I think we're going to have all of our hotels full just as a matter of course, and so it's a matter of those folks who are already in our community, in my mind, getting them to stay here and shop here and eat here. So what can we do to, working with the Visitors Bureau, working with Downtown Main Street, working with our local businesses to promote, say, hey, you're already staying in Lee Summit, here are 10 great things that you can do while you're here. What can we do to keep those folks in here once they're here? I think, you know, I don't want to see us go super overboard trying to spend a bunch of money marketing to people to come here, because again, the hotels are going to fill up, and I just want us to be realistic about, about that. I don't think, I love Lee Summit. I don't imagine it as being just the destination of someone who's planning their trip to America at random, but once they're here, I think there's a lot that they can see and do, right? I think that some of the low-hanging fruit we can do are the deregulatory items, loosening up our rules for Airbnbs, loosening up our rules for special events, for pop-ups, the things that, that we don't have to spend a ton of time and money to do, but we can make it easier for other people to do in the community and to kind of put some clear rules in place. I also think even if we say short-term rentals are 100% banned, that people will do them anyway. And how much energy do we want to spend enforcing that? So making the signage more streamlined, all those things that we can do where we're just kind of, just making it a little bit easier for people to go about their business and, and again, promote people being in Lee Summit, spending their money here. I would love to see some community events like watch parties. I think if we're not doing that at Green Street, I have no idea what that space is for. So I would love to see some events like that. As far as communications go, I think once we have some of these policies in place and some of these events planned, I want to definitely see what we can do to get that information out to businesses and residents, like to let them know, here are, here's what Lee Summit requires for you to operate in Airbnb. Here's what Lee Summit requires for you to get a special event permit during this time period, just to try to make it really clear, if you're a business owner, if you're a resident, what the requirements are and try to communicate that as clearly as we can. Like, I want to see bullet point flyers that someone can hand out, print out, that's not reading through 50 pages of regulations. I want them to be able to see, here's what we want you to do if you want to do X, Y, or Z. And, and then, of course, promoting whatever events we do to, to visitors as well as to our residents. As far as Lee Summit Gold 2026 goes, since they haven't made any real specific asks of us yet, I don't really know what to do there, but I, I think we should definitely have a conversation with them. I know when, when I'd met with some of them before, they were talking about just like the very basic things like getting insurance in place to cover the officers of the organizations so that they can start planning more things. So if they need some kind of initial help getting some of that together, maybe some, some very minimal initial funding to just get themselves launched, maybe that's a discussion we could have. But those are the kind of things that I would like to see us at least talking about as a council, at least, at least taking through committee and seeing if, I mean, everybody up here may not share my vision for this, but those are the kind of things that I'd like to see us do, and I think where we can make some progress before we know everything else that's going on as those announcements get made. So that's all my notes. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
I just have one question on if we're chosen for a parking, park-and-ride. I think we all know where the location is. Is that going to be a city? Is the city can control that? Or are we just lobbying to get... Is the city can control that, or are we just lobbying to get one here?
We would have, we would, we would lobby to, you know, obviously, we submitted to, to have one here, but the, the fencing, the control of all of that is on KC 2026. For, you know, the safety, the security, staffing it, all of those things, providing the buses, um, ensuring that people go through a safety check before they get on the bus, all of that is on the responsibility of the larger planning group of KC 2026.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I've got some, some, so, the Chamber Group, I'm sorry, what's it called? LS?
LS Goal 26.
Goal, LS Goal. I didn't remember that. Goal. Um, like, when I think about all of this, I think a little bit more like strategic as in target marketing. Um, so therefore, once the, the, the camps are established, or at least the games, and you know what countries will be playing here, right?
Yes. At least for those first group, uh, those first, um, group stages.
First four, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Then, all of a sudden, you have a certain language that's, they're gonna be in the Kansas City area, and if you're talking about 650,000 people and you're talking about one quarter of that, I mean, you're talking about a lot of people, a couple hundred thousand people, or at least 100, so, um, so how do you, uh, welcome them to the city as far as tourism goes? Um, I think in terms of, um, you, you know, do we, we need to be hiring people that can, um, voiceover in that language so that we can market to them, so that we're using a language that they understand, because you just said, half of them don't speak English.
According to the demographics that you received.
Yeah. So if you got half of the people that are not speaking, um, then there, that's where I would see spending money is, is getting people to do the voiceovers for the 10 Things to Do in Lee Summit, or the Things to Do in Lee Summit This Week, and then you, you plot out your, your target marketing for, um, June, the first week of June, second week of June, third week of June, fourth week of June, July 1st, um, and you, and you target, you know, you, you make it, you make it easier for them to understand, and then, yes, you have to have all these, the infrastructure and everything in place, but, um, they'll find a way to come, transportation-wise, if we, if we can, number one, provide the special events that you're talking about, possibly, big and small, but also make it easier for them to understand, you know, what it is and where they're going to. Um, and I understand that there's one person in the family that's gonna be, for sure, translating for everybody, for, you know, that type of thing, but I just know that that's what I would see as a welcoming of community, that's, that's trying to find a way to be, um, to make it easier for them. So I guess what's really hard for me, though, is whenever I, whenever, let's say the council here wants to make a plan, um, a business plan, like, you have to have a goal. Like, you have to say, "Okay, here's what our goal is." So does, do you think the LS group has a goal?
Um, I think they're in the process of formulating that. I don't know if.
To me, you have to have a goal, as we want to bring in to our community 5,000 people a day, which is less than 1% of the total population of people that are going to be visiting our community. 6,500 would be 1%. Like, you set goals and then you say, "Okay, how do we achieve these goals?" Um, and then you say, "Okay, here's the, here's the plan. We're gonna have, you know..." The, the, I don't know how you s, I don't know how you make plans. I understand you can meet and talk about infrastructure and all these things, but you need to set some big goals first. So that's what I'd be interested in, is have they set big goals, and if they haven't, they need to set big goals because you can't plan and do a business plan, and then a marketing plan to support your business plan without, without the big goals.
Right. And so I, I think some of that is the, the guidance from council about what are things that they would like to see, one, and then two.
Oh, do I get to choose?
No, no, no.
Wonderful. Yeah, 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 yeah. Let me choose.
Some guidance.
I want 20,000 people a day, Mark.
Like I said, talk about vision.
I want 50,000 people a day to come, no, I don't want that many. See, that's why it's dangerous, because I don't know, that might overwhelm Chief Forbes.
But then also, what are the things, what are the things that you want city staff to work on to kind of what, to what, um, Councilmember Shields was saying, you know, "Hey, are we willing to relax and have some conversation about short-term rental rentals?"
You're, you're ahead of it, though. You haven't, you're, you're jumping ahead to, oh, let's plan for success.
But I think that would give LS Goal a, a, an idea of, "Oh, okay, we, we know council's going to work with us," or, or the city's going to work with us on these things, "So now we can plan this direction and we can set some of those goals." I don't know why I'm not speaking for them by any means.
Yeah, you are.
But I think, well, I'm just, I'm just sharing.
She's, she's backpedaling.
No, I'm not backpedaling. I'm just sharing some information.
All I'm saying is, we need a vision, goals. How many people, you know? I mean, we don't want to overwhelm our police and fire, but we also, and staff, but we also, if we don't set goals, I don't know what we're planning for, so we need to set some goals. So I think, I'm, I'm sure, I know John Ellis is one of the chairs of that. He could come up with some goals, so.
We're hoping to get some from them.
With respect to that, Mayor, I would say, yes, that desire to activate program Green Street and maximize that use, that's been made very clear, and I'll bring this up. This is more on the short-term rentals. Um, this is a recommendation.
Yeah, but Mark, if we want, if we want, we just had Downtown Days. How many people do we have in Downtown Days, do you think, Corey?
Uh, Donnie estimated between 70 and 80,000.
We had 70 to 80,000 people in our downtown, and it was pretty crowded. I don't need it to be that crowded.
Yeah.
So, we need to set those types of goals, and then we can figure out how we, so, anyway. If they need some goal ideas, we can come up with some goal ideas.
Yeah, I mean, so, short-term rentals, right? This is what I have from, uh, the leadership so far with LS Goal 26. One, uh, the recommendation is to temporarily, temporarily relax short-term rental regulations for the purpose of maximizing revenue to the city, maximizing potential for tourism dollars being spent in Lee Summit, and minimizing the need for policing, you know, property owners and things of that nature. So, those are starting to come here, but that's pretty granular.
Goals have to be smart, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, time-bound. So, those are minimized is not time-bound and not specific, and like, we need some goals.
You should go present to them.
I will. I'll go present to them.
Well, and we, obviously, that's its own separate entity, and it's not, you know, while we have staff that are in, in those conversations and part of that conversation, I, I think it's not for us to direct them, what, you know, and give them that. We, we expect them to come back with some goals.
Okay, I'm so confused. Did she not just ask us? What we, where do we go from here? That's what it says, right there, it says, "Where do we go from here?" What's the city council's vision for the World Cup?
Yes.
I feel like you're giving me permission to set goals. Is she not?
She is.
Yes.
Well, then, I'm gonna go set some goals. I'm gonna bring it to you guys, and we're gonna say, "Hey, what do you think of these goals?" And we're gonna quantify them, they're gonna be smart goals. Specific, measurable, attainable.
That's the feedback we need.
So Chief Forbes, if, I might have to actually call you and say, "Is this..."
Feasible.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's realistic. Do we really want this many people here?
Says yes.
But I think, I think we need to be, they, you know, you set these goals, and they're like, "Ooh, how are we gonna handle all these people?" Oh, well, then we need to translate some of these events with a translator, or with someone that speaks that language.
You know, if you just put them on here, Google will translate it.
I know, we got Google translators, but that's just not, the, the, these are young people that are gonna be here, probably. They're too impatient for that.
No, it's, they know how to do that stuff better than we do.
Okay. Well, I'll quit worrying about the translation. Let's just set some goals, then.
Sounds good.
All right. But the whole Airbnb thing, I mean, how many Airbnbs are we gonna allow in the city?
Every single house.
See what I'm saying? We need to set some goals.
No, agreed, and, and that was part of initiating this conversation, was to get some ideas from council, what your vision is, get that feedback, and then when you're talking about, you know, relaxing some of these ordinances or making changes, how do you want that brought back to, to you as a governing body? Do you want it brought back individually through committee? Do you want it back, brought back as a time-bound, temporary?
Okay, but let's be realistic about this. We can change these Airbnb rules for, for 39 days or however long. We can't monitor it or enforce it, or, you know, so it just is more of a guideline.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, realistically.
Or if we're changing ordinances for special events, or the pop-ups, and, and all of those things, you know, do we, do we package that as a package, or do we bring each individual one back? That's some of the guidance, I think.
I think you need to define pop-ups for us.
Yeah.
What's that?
I think if, if we're looking at, if, if, um, it depends, it could be a retail pop-up around an event, it could be, you know, where they have a small.
I picture, when I hear a pop-up, I, I understand retail and, and such, but I can also picture people doing a pop-up in a park, and having a barbecue.
Well, that would be, that would be for Parks Department to regulate. But, but in all, actually, I think it is, it is if they want to expand, you know, the restaurant outdoors and do something a little different than normal.
The parks need to get, they, they need to get in the conversation, then, because if we're changing ordinances and such, it's gonna affect them, and, I mean, do we allow alcohol in the parks?
Nope. Not currently.
Uh-oh.
The only limited exceptions, I think Hartman Park is the only one that may have that.
We're gonna have to maybe look at that for the, as a, something we change for the 39 days.
Curfews, those types of things, within parks.
Oh, man. Chief Forbes, have they talked to you about all this stuff? And you're ready.
Okay.
Mr. Elam?
Well, I was just gonna come up and give an example of a pop-up, uh, you know, when the Royals won the World, World Series the first time, and when the, uh, Chiefs won the Super Bowl, you know, we had vendors pop up kind of at all different corners, uh, of the, the community.
Quick trip.
Quick trip areas like that. We have processes for that currently in place, uh, and just like a lot of these other things, the question that, that we really have as staff is, um, how much enforcement, uh, do we want to see as a community? How much do we want to allow? Uh, and we can write that, uh, to a number of different ways, uh, however. So, to your point about, we need the goals, we need to establish some goals, is what we're trying to achieve, that's absolutely what we need. Um, short-term rentals are a great example. We can write it to, to where we don't have any regulations, we can write it to where there's a process, we can use our existing process. I'll just be honest, what happens with short-term rentals, with our existing, um, existing ordinances, uh, it's restrictive to the point that it sets up conflict for a neighbor to be able to call, and it's a Neighborhood Services case, and so the question is, is that something that we need to be spending resources on trying to enforce during this time period or not? Uh, and those are the questions and conversations, and, and we'd love to get a little direction so we can, we can change that. I think Councilmember Shields gave us her direction of, and idea of deregulation. Um, if there's a sentiment from the council as a whole, that level of, we want to look at what deregulation could look like, that's gonna provide enough direction to us as staff to bring forward some different options with some different things that we think could be achieved from that.
Yeah.
Overall, so, just wanted to add that.
Well, we just, if, the reason we need to do some deregulation is because we can't enforce everything. So we have to dereg back to the point where, what is it that we have to enforce? Whatever we have to enforce, we, we set that boundary and then we dereg back to that, and then we need to communicate to our city that, "Hey, things are gonna be different for the next 45 days." What'd you say?
Yeah, I think, and that ties into that communication piece. How do we prepare this community for during this timeframe, right? Here's what's, here's kind of the way we're operating. Here's what the expectations are.
Okay. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what, I guess what I'd like to see is for this to go either to CEDC or to a council work session. I think, I think we just need a few hours devoted to this, to talk through some options, and some things that, like we've talked about at the, uh, LS Goal group, are like, would this look like a 60-day or six-month suspension of certain rules just during this time period, or what? And I think, I think that's the kind of thing committee needs to talk through. Or it could be tightening them up, like, it could be that the consensus is actually we want to really crack down on some of these things. I don't, personally, don't think that's wise. I think it's gonna be a waste of, of stressed, uh, stretched resources during that time, and also, um, if the goal is to bring money and tourism to Lee Summit, let's make it easier to operate a business and, and do all this, so. But I, I think that, to me, the next step is to send this to a committee or a work group where we can kind of really hash this out, and then staff can prepare whatever ordinances, policies we need to, to work through it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I would like to see.
Okay. I know that when it comes to pop-ups, you need to at least have, designate where they can be. You can't just have a pop-up anywhere and everywhere. I mean, otherwise, you're gonna have a pop-up in a warehouse somewhere that, you know, behind, behind Home Depot, you know, I mean, um, so there might have to be some boundaries. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with Councilmember Shields on almost everything that she stated. I think that, um, I like the idea of sending it to, um, CEDC for further discussion and kind of narrow down some, um, some of the topics, so then the whole council kind of has maybe more direction, because right now, I feel like it's just super scattered and we don't really have a lot of direction.
If we set goals, we'll have direction, though.
Yeah, I think, I think setting goals is super important. I do. I feel like, I mean, I've attended a few of those meetings, and I do feel like they're, big goals need to be set so we know what we're aiming for. Um, but, yeah, so I like the idea of sending it to CEDC.
I love putting CEDC to work, so I'm fine with that. Just don't let Donna Lake, like, try to limit you, like, she's trying to round me up.
I'm trying to limit everything. I want your feedback. We can be all the things.
All the things, all the time.
Yeah.
For 45 days.
Okay. What other, what other questions or comments, discussion, do you have for, um, World Cup 26? Okay.
Perfect.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Now I got people chiming in. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say real quick, it, you know, I would like if the Chamber Groups do have some kind of consolidated vision, that they, I mean, I understand they have 10 different groups that are working on it, but if they have something that they could bring and say, "This is what we're thinking right now," to kind of help us as we go to CEDC and work on it through that group, that would, that way we're not all trying to do either the same thing or absolutely nothing on a topic, right? So, something. Well, I mean, we get to do that if we want to, but, you know.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Very good. We are off to the races, then. We're gonna go through proposed ordinances at this point. We've got first readings. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-10?
Do you need to formally remove that?
I said that earlier, didn't I?
Yeah, you did.
We are, um, we're punting housing, um, discussion till next week. That's the next thing on the agenda.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading, Bill number 25-107, an ordinance approving the FY 2026 Workers Compensation Exceptional Rule Policy authorized, and city manager to execute, enter into agreement with Midwest Employers for deposit premium of $161,068, and to execute all documents necessary to obtain such coverage.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-107, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Um, that wasn't from committee, so we just, do, do we read that twice?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Councilmember Lovell, would you please read? I wanna see Councilmember Lovell how he does. I wanna see if he can read it. Would you please read Bill number 25 dash 1-0?
I turn into a pumpkin after 10 o'clock, so I cannot be held.
Oh, my goodness.
I move to advance to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 108, an ordinance approving 2025 labor agreement by and between the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri and International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers Local 778, and authorizing city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Excellent. Nice job. Uh, we have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 108, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Moves to second reading. Thank you, unanimously. Uh, Councilmember, okay, now we're on, yeah, now we're on proposed ordinances for, for committee, so we'll be reading these twice. Councilmember, uh, Shields, would you please read Bill number 25 dash 109?
Absolutely. I move for second reading, Bill number 25 dash 109, an ordinance authorizing the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri to waive Lee's Summit Housing Authority's payment in lieu of taxes pilots for the authorities fiscal year ending September 30, 2023 in the amount of $33,874.16 since September 30, 2024, in the amount of $33,874.16.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 109, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Hodges?
Sorry, I had just had somebody reach out saying that they saw this on the agenda and said that they thought it would be great to have just a small update about the housing authority. Just a quick overview, just, if that's okay?
That's great.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, um, as the liaison, that things are going very well. Um, huge improvements. Things are moving forward. There's a full staff there now that they all answer phones. When the residents call, residents are, um, coming up to me saying how happy they are, um, with how things are being run. It's more organized and they can tell that, I mean, things are getting fixed at their residences. It's amazing. So I just, that's the update and that things are on the right track and there's still more work to be done, but huge progress. So...
Wow. Thank you so much for that. That was, that's good. All right. Um, I have a motion on the floor in a second. Discussion? All right, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does go to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 109, an ordinance authorizing the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri to waive Lee's Summit Housing Authority's payment in lieu of taxes pilots for the authorities fiscal year ending September 30, 2023 in the amount of $33,874.16 and September 30, 2024 in the amount of $33,000.874.16.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 109, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Shields. Would you please read Bill number 25 110?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 25 dash 110, an ordinance approving the purchase of furniture for Hangar Two in the amount of $128,162.77 for Pure Workspace Solutions and authorizing city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 110, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? I think we should do a pop-up at Hangar Two. I mean, it's what, 65,000 square feet or whatever? All right. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
I now move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 110, an ordinance approving the purchase of furniture for Hangar Two in the amount of $128,162.77 from Pure Workspace Solutions and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 110, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Do you have the next one? Okay, Councilmember Shields, would you please, 25 11, 111?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 25 dash 111, an ordinance approving amendment number nine to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 111, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Does go to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 111, an ordinance approving amendment number nine to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 111, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25 112, please?
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill number 25 dash 112, an ordinance enacting new section of city code of ordinances authorizing city manager to approve claims, expenses, payments, or settlements up to $75,000 per claim and further authorizing city attorney to approve claims, expenses, payments, or settlements up to $25,000 per claim.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 112, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, please?
Thank you. I move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 112, an ordinance enacting new section of city code of ordinances authorizing the city manager to approve claims, expenses, payments, or settlements up to $75,000 per claim and further authorizing the city attorney to approve claims, expenses, payments, or settlements up to $25,000 per claim.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 112, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill's adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill 25 1113, 113, please?
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill number 25 dash 113, an ordinance authorizing execution of a agreement between the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Public Safety in the amount of $9,160.36 for equipment for the Lee's Summit Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 113, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 113, an ordinance authorizing execution of a agreement between the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Public Safety in the amount of $9,160.36 for the equipment for the Lee's Summit Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 113, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, you wanna read one? Bill 25 114, please?
I move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 114, an ordinance approving the award of RFP number 2025 dash 060 for Phase II Employee Compensation and Classification Services to DCI Consulting Group Incorporated and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 114, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of Bill number 25 dash 114, an ordinance approving the award of RFP number 2025 dash 060 for Phase II Employee Compensation and Classification Services to DCI Consulting Group Incorporated and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 114, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25 115, please?
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill number 25 dash 115, an ordinance authorizing the city to purchase insurance coverage for property casualty and liability insurance programs for FY 26 beginning July 1, 2025 where the total expenditure is equal to or less than $1,500,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents necessary for the city to purchase such insurance.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25 dash 115, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of Bill number 25 dash 115, an, an ordinance authorizing the city to purchase insurance coverage for property casualty and liability insurance programs for the FY 26 beginning July 1, 2025 where the total expenditure is equal to or less than $1,500,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents necessary for the city to purchase such insurance.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25 dash 115, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Shields. And now we're on committee reports. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me pull up my summary that they gave me. Okay, so we had a public works meeting, what, I guess Monday night? Last night? Oh, I guess it was yesterday. Um, okay, so we discussed the Rain Tree Dam Bridge Rehab Construction, Annual Curb Repair Program and the Annual Crack Seal Program. And then we had continued discussions about the stormwater utility and the level of service. That was exciting. Councilmember Hodges doesn't seem to think, uh, public works is super exciting, I don't think, but... I think it's a very exciting committee. And then, um, we, oh, the committee settled on the preferred level of service so that next month's committee discussion will address the stormwater utility financial needs in support of the preferred level of service and review funding sources. And Councilmember Lovell said it's not an exciting committee. They're wrong. They are wrong about all of this.
I said it. It's long. A lot of items. I didn't say it's boring. I said there's always a lot of items. I didn't hear or see anything.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
That's a hard one to follow. Uh, I was just gonna say that, um, myself, Councilmember Lovell, and the mayor all attended the EDC board meeting today. Um, they're continuing to make, uh, progress. Um, they're working on hiring, um, possibly some, uh, part-time staff and, uh, marketing firm to help with event planning and marketing. Um, and a lot of exciting projects in the pipelines. We had some great updates on that. And I think our new president is, uh, doing well with, with everything. And then, um, mentioned that the 40th anniversary celebration, um, will be coming up later this year, probably uh, in the fall or winter, just starting to think about planning that. So stay tuned. It's gonna be exciting.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Council comments? Councilmember Pryor? Yes?
Okay, so this is pretty serious, but we're missing our trash can. We had a trash can. And yeah, we think Councilmember Lovell stole our trash can. Well, we had one and it used to be right here. And we're all used to being able to, like, throw stuff away. And now we can't.
So, I would like to apologize to Public Works. I do think you're the most fun people because, I mean, I'm thinking about ways we can make money during World Cup. I'm thinking snow rodeo, charging money to let people drive the, the, the course. The parks could do, pop up at Splash, at, at the Splash Pad or whatever. I'm sorry, what's our Summit Waves? I mean, you're, you're gonna be in trouble. Summit Waves is gonna be overwhelmed. Wow. So, you, we could come up with a bunch of ways to make a bunch of crazy money, but then we'll probably get event fatigue. So... Staff Roundtable?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick items. Um, uh, View High Drive at the, um, I-470 interchange. We've heard from, uh, the developer out there that that, the, um, access to the north of I-470 will be closed beginning June 16th. Um, so you, in order to access Paragon Staller, you'll need to come from the north, from Bannister Road. Uh, and then folks that may, you know, travel down View High to get onto I-470, you'll have to access I-470 by different routes. So just a, a note there. That's a developer-controlled project working with MoDOT for that diverging diamond interchange out there. We have heard too, that substantial completion for that, which means when might that be completed to where traffic can flow again would be, uh, September 15th. So just, uh, if you hear of anything, uh, concerns over there, it is planned to close, uh, June 16th, north side. Um, and then just Downtown Days was brought up. Um, you know, we've, we've deployed those, those barriers. We're thankful for that investment. I think Downtown is, is thankful for that. The community should be, uh, thankful for those barriers and appreciation for all our public safety folks, Public Works, Water, everybody that played a part in having, you know, behind the scenes supporting that festival. Really appreciate all the efforts. Uh, that's pretty taxing on us as, as we, you know, talk about these special, community-wide special events. So we appreciate all the time that, uh, staff puts into that to, to support those community events. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
You really do have a strong presence there, everywhere. Um, in booths, Fire Department, police are everywhere and they have different booths.
Water Bar, yep.
So, it's really nice. So thank you. Councilmember Shields?
I just wanted to say, cause I did forget to say it in comments, I love, love, love the new safety barriers. I'm so glad that we were able to get those and get them deployed in time for Downtown Days. And I, I, it sounds like it went really smoothly for all of our public safety personnel getting those, those out. And so I'm, I'm really thrilled. So thank you.
It was too crowded to take my dog this year, though. Yeah. All right. Um, I think that's, that's it. There's no closed session, so this meeting is, is adjourned at 10:30.